So I think we'll go ahead and get started. If everyone could take their seats, and those that are chatting in the back, if you wouldn't mind not chatting in the back or doing it outside, that would be great. Okay, I'd like to welcome you all to the regular Fairfax Town Council meeting at the Fairfax Women's Club, 46th Park Road. It's November 6, 2019, and it's about 7:02. And we did have a special meeting preceding this meeting where we appointed a candidate to the Tree Committee, that was Ted Pugh. Appointment of an applicant to the Open Space Committee, Brad Hendall. And an appointment of an applicant to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and that was Eric Kilek. So I'd like to call to order the meeting, and let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Hannah, would you like to do the roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Lax.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goddard.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor Kohler.
Here. And I guess I should have announced the special meeting actions now, so I will follow the agenda in the future. Just one suggestion for the agenda. I would like to move Item 12 for Upper Scenic Road before the public hearing. That's part of the regular agenda. And I'd also like to move Item 15 after Item 12, if folks are okay with that sort of suggestion. I'd like a motion for approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is there any chance we could also move the public hearing after 13 and 14 for the building and fire?
We could do that.
Okay, that'd be great from fires' perspective and buildings.
Okay, all right. So Renee, would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes? I know we're all tired.
If I can just say that I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as changed, but I can't remember all the changes.
As modified.
Perfect, as modified.
Okay, would somebody like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so moving on. The meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. It would be great if folks wouldn't be talking while I'm doing this. Please turn off all cellular phones or place in silent mode. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. So a few announcements. Vacancies on boards and commissions. We have up to two vacancies on the Climate Action Committee. We have no other vacancies. And applications are available at Town Hall and on the town website. For more information, contact the town clerk or visit www.townoffairfax.org. Also, the Fairfax Food Pantry. It's Saturdays, 9 through 11, the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are needed. Anyone who needs food, you don't have to demonstrate need, you don't have to say that you live in Fairfax. Just show up and get your food. Another announcement, the Fairfax Open Space Committee is having a fundraiser here at the Women's Club on Friday, November 15, from 7 to 9:00 PM. It's free, or donations are welcome. It's Film Night, the documentary Rebels With A Cause, which many of us have seen, but it's worth seeing again. And there will also be a panel discussion from some notable folks who either participated or know folks that were involved. So one more thing I want to talk about before we move on to our presentation is I'd like to spend a few minutes on the recent PG&E Public Safety Power Shut-Off, which is known as PSPS. I believe that many of us learned how we can better prepare for these events, and also a true disaster. I want to thank the community who were patient, worked to adapt to early 20th century living, in a sense, and made do during this time. Some were out three days, and others, like me, were out four days. We also know that Marin County had the highest cell tower rate in the Bay Area and possibly the state of failure. It was 57% at one time. I want to thank our police, who worked 12- to 15-hour shifts and ran our charging station, and both the police and fire, who stood ready to respond to public safety issues, as they always do 24/7. Jody Timms, our Commissioning on Aging rep and Chair of Age Friendly, who's here tonight, maybe just wave your hand, Jody, was at the county EOC each day, as was, I believe Cindy Swift was also there, our CIRC coordinator, and Cindy's in the back as well. And I also want to speak about Bennett House. Most of you know that Bennett House is an independent living for low and very low-income seniors. It's not assisted living or skilled nursing, but due to age, health, and disability, there are vulnerable people living at Bennett House. It is owned and operated by Mercy Housing, a nonprofit. As many of you know, a resident, Phyllis Gould, who's R. Rosie the Riveter, contacted a reporter at KTTU late Tuesday or very early Wednesday. She had concerns about residents, particularly on the second and third floors. I've spoken to Phyllis, who's a personal friend of mine, Susanna Vasquez, the resident coordinator at Bennett House, and also Mercy Housing's president, Douglas Shoemaker. Clearly, there were things that Mercy Housing did not do, things they could have done better, but also many good things they did to prepare residents prior to the PSPS and take care of them during the event. They had contacted the residents prior to make sure they had food, water, and flashlights, and to try to prepare them for the event. And Susanna Vasquez contacted the nonprofit Extra Food, which brings food there, to ensure they would bring more food than usual during the event. They did not have generators on site, and backup hall lighting went out after about 12 hours. They did have a staff person on site at all times, and they did check on their list of most vulnerable folks. The heaters worked in most of the units, only a few are electric, and the rest are kind of baseboard heaters, so maybe some folks didn't know that the heaters would work. The president, Mr. Shoemaker, checked on Bennett House on Sunday, because they operate about 15 similar housing facilities that were affected by the PSPS. And last Wednesday, County Health and Human Services Resource Teams, along with Garrett Toy, our town manager, and one of our police staff, Willie Smith, visited Bennett House residents. The purpose was to check on residents and provide any needed food and supplies, such as flashlights or batteries. In addition, Garrett met with Mercy Housing, Mr. Shoemaker, the president, and others regarding the outage impacts on Bennett House residents. Mercy Housing staff for Bennett House were helpful in assisting with the visit. Overall, most of the residents were in good spirits, given the situation. Temporary generators were brought in that day, and they are on-site now. Mr. Shoemaker informed me that a permanent generator would be installed as part of the remodeling effort that's underway. While Mercy Housing onsite staff provided the services they could during the blackout, such as checking on the most vulnerable folks, they acknowledged that things could have been better. Mr. Shoemaker also met with residents and has committed to make changes, given that they now have better knowledge of what is needed during the power outages. He also sent me a letter, kind of outlining some of the details of what they did and what they're trying to do to make things better. And that will be posted on our town website soon. Correct, Garrett? Okay. In addition to the generators, they've modified their emergency policies and protocols for future PSPS events. The town of Fairfax also takes the residents' concerns really seriously and appreciates the efforts of the county and Mercy Housing. Our town staff, probably led by Garrett, will also be working closely with Mercy Housing to assist where needed, and will also be discussing with the county Health and Human Services their role in the future. The important message is that Mercy Housing has learned from this experience and made commitments moving forward to address the residents' concerns. The outages may be a new norm for communities during fire season, and it's important that we, as a community, not just Bennett House, adapt to the lessons learned from this first PSPS in Fairfax. I also spoke to Phyllis Gould. I reminded her she could always call me, but she said she hadn't wanted to bother me. I just took her to our non-engineering event for 90 and better folks. We had a celebration here. And I also reminded her, anybody can call our police 24/7. They're there. They'll respond. In fact, they had done some wellness checks on Tuesday. Thank you for listening. I know that many of you would like to comment on the PSPS and specifically on Bennett House, and you can do so at open time, where you can comment on things that are not specifically on the agenda. And now the election. So Measure F, that's our parcel tack that largely supports police and fire, youth and senior programs, some of our wildfire prevention efforts, capital projects. It passed resoundingly at about 79%. That's a record. And I led that campaign. I want to thank our community for coming out and voting, for the many volunteers who walked precincts, who did phone banking, who worked with me on artwork for the flyers. It was a real team effort, and it couldn't have been done without the community's support and continued support. Also want to congratulate Vice Mayor Goddard. Top vote getter.[755.01][755.01](applause) She ran a really unusual campaign, and I can say, I saw those folks waving those wood signs. There's no way I could have done it. They were really heavy. But she ran a very interesting, unique campaign and came out on top. Also, right now, there's a little uncertainty. Cindy Swift, who's sitting in the back, has a slight lead over Stephanie Hellman. And I want to say how fortunate we are to live in a community where people are so engaged and come out and are willing to run campaigns. It's kind of daunting. I've done it a few times, and knocking on doors and listening to folks and just getting out there every day and it's nonstop, I can tell you, it's pretty exhausting. But I want to say how proud I am that I live in a town where people care enough to come out and run. So whatever happens, it'll all work, and we'll all work together. And we all care about our lovely town, and we all have different perspectives, and that's part of what I love about this town, that we don't always agree, but we all kind of have a lot of love for this place. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do anything right now.
Yes. It's a little hard to follow that, but I just wanted to make an announcement that on Friday night, Sustainable Fairfax will be showing a film called True Cost. It's about the textile industry and the fast fashion world and whirling overconsumption that goes on and the effect that that's having on our environment. It's an excellent film. We'll also be having a hat and scarf swap, right here in this room, starting at 6:30 on Friday. Please join us. And I had one other announcement, and it's just because it's fresh in my mind. I walked, because I was campaigning, but I also got to meet people in the dark, literally. And so walking, even with the lights on, I had a lot of trouble finding addresses with the lights off. I absolutely couldn't see addresses. And so it really, something I learned when I first joined council was that it's actually -- Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, or chief, that it's a legal requirement to put numbers on that are -- is it legal requirement to have numbers on your house so that your house can be identified by address?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So I would say that about half the houses that I saw --
So the answer was yes?
The answer was yes.
Todd Landau.
So I couldn't find numbers. And so I would encourage you to do something very simple, which is go out and get some cool numbers and put them somewhere very visible, so that if you do need help in an emergency, and certainly if it's dark and smoky, that they might reflect even, so that people can find you. All right, thanks.
Okay, and just a quick reminder, folks, for those of you that have campaigned signs up, you have seven days to take them down. And the other thing is, there were a lot of campaign signs in public right-of-ways. That's always not legal, so please don't put signs in public right-of-ways. So with that, we -- oh, you have an announcement, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on one thing you mentioned, which is that while it is indeed a great benefit of living in Fairfax that we can call our police department 24/7, don't call 911, because there's -- whenever anything happens that causes a lot of calls, it ties up the 911 lines, and that is really a problem for someone who needs those.
Well, call 911 if it's an emergency. Just don't call for information about when your power is going to be on, et cetera, or where the charging stations are. So I want to say also, we have the only police station that's open 24/7 in the county. We're the only place you can walk in, 3 o'clock in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning. And that's part of what Measure F supports, is our continued individual police department and working with Ross Valley Fire. So want to also thank the police and fire who walked precincts for us in their off-time, and they were pretty busy during this fire season and PSPS. So with that, we will move on. Before we do open time, we're going to have a presentation on draft community evacuation maps and our amended emergency operations plan. And first, we'll have Todd Landau, who is our Fire Safe Marin Council Coordinator, and next, we'll have Chief Christopher Moran, who's our Town of Fairfax Police Chief. And before Todd gets started, I just want to give a little background. As mayor, I convened the Citizens Disaster Council several months ago, and the plan was to update our emergency operations plan, which is largely for our emergency responders. But also, I had this dream of creating community-friendly evacuation maps. And I were very fortunate, I had -- we had Todd as part of the Citizens Disaster Council and many others, but also Michael St. John, who couldn't be here tonight. So Michael runs the county search and rescue. He was a Southern Marin firefighter up until recently, when he retired. He also worked with Mill Valley on their evacuation routes. So my dream is coming true, because the evacuation routes that are in our EOP, as we call it, are really for emergency responders. So Todd's going to talk about, we're still in draft, and he's going to talk about the effort that he and Michael have embarked on with support from the town council and the town to pay for these wonderful maps. Press that button.
Karaoke microphone. So first, I'll apologize. The presentation doesn't look quite right on this. It looks better on an Apple Mac, and full disclosure, I'm a shareholder, so -- but it does look a lot better there. So the introduction you gave is fantastic. The Disaster Council convened. Mike St. John and I were assigned the task of creating community-friendly evacuation maps. We had done some research prior to the convening of the Disaster Council, so we're prepared with some concepts and had ideas where the evacuation maps ought to go. We had identified, at the time, a mapping product that was released in 2017 and 18. This is called the Tsunami Clear Mapping Program. It's a statewide mapping program for areas that are potentially impacted by tsunamis. This is relevant, especially as the background. What we realized when looking at this program, this is approved by the Department of -- or the Office of Emergency Services in the state. This was funded through FEMA. It's a fantastic, easy-to-read mapping product. And when we looked at this mapping product, we realized that tsunami maps were essentially inverse wildfire evacuation maps. You go to the opposite places for wildfires that you do for tsunamis. We reached out to Professor Janikin at Chapman University, who was the lead developer for FEMA of the Tsunami Clear Program. Claudine Janikin is the author of a study, The Taxonomy of Urgent Way Finding: Assessing Graphic Variables, Components in Citywide Evacuation Maps. It's the best research of its kind that we were able to identify. It uses cognitive processes and thought processes to develop maps that are easy for people to read and understand during emergencies and during periods of high stress, helping people make decisions under pressure. Turned out, when we reached out to Professor Janikin, they were already working on a product, Fire Clear Maps, so they were one step ahead of us. We had some discussions with the folks at Chapman University and asked if they could participate and help us develop maps for Fairfax. And they agreed. We asked them for a quote, and it turned out it was extraordinarily affordable, I think, in all of our opinions. This process has been a lengthy process. We're working with the Marin County Fire Department, with Ross Valley Fire Department, with Nevada Fire District right now, and developing a baseline standard for maps that could potentially be used county-wide. And I think this is important for all of us to understand, that this is a county-wide effort. Fairfax is in the lead on this. You'll be probably the first community to release these maps. But when Nevada Fire District releases their maps, they're going to use the same symbology, the same terminology, the same layout, color schemes. They're going to be translatable across jurisdictions, which is extremely important when we're talking about wildfires. So this is an example of some of the custom symbology that they developed for Marin County specifically. This is some of the iterations and thought processes. We developed images, for example, with staircases leading down, which is the opposite of the staircases they depict for tsunami maps. Simplicity, very important, and their design standards are extremely high at the university. This is an overview of what the Fire Clear Mapping Campaign will look like. We're calling it a campaign, and it does work in sequence, so I'll show you some detailed maps in a second. But it starts with a citywide overview map that shows, in the broadest sense, primary evacuation routes for the entire community. It breaks down the next step, in fact, on the reverse side of this, is typically a zone identification map. The fire agencies had already developed zones. They call them the mutual threat zones. They use these zones for evacuations, and the town of Fairfax had already been divided into eight mutual-threat zones or evacuation zones. I translate very well to this concept. From there, those eight zones will each have an individual area map. The individual area maps will show more of the neighborhood scale in this community. For example, Cascade Canyon is one of the zones, Manor Hill's another, Oak Manor, Glen, which is towards White Hill School and the end of Alima Road. The town's broken into eight similar zones. Each one of these zones will -- come on. I think I got a dead battery.
I think you may have touched -- well, how about we give them another mic? We'll just go through every mic.
That one's working now. Okay. So each one of these maps will have a QR code. They'll be numbered. These are designed to be used in both a print format, on an 8.5 by 11 sheet, or in an electronic format by scanning the QR code with your phone. It will automatically download the maps to your phone, and they'll be maps that you can use in real time with the GPS on a smartphone. This is a look at the first draft of the overview map, showing just part of downtown Fairfax. You can see these orange zones. These are the areas we want people to stay out of. These are essentially the wildland urban interface or the high-fire-hazard severity zones in Fairfax. We want to get people to the valley floor, so we've emphasized that in all of our evacuation messaging, and these maps depict that. This is a look at the overview maps for the city with the individual zones depicted. You can see we've gone through multiple iterations. This project, we really started this in August. We're now in November. It's moving faster than I expected in some ways, but these are some of the iterations we've gone through. The developers have helped us find a color scheme, which might not be as visually appealing, but it is visually compliant for people with issues differentiating colors. Every step of this process, these are designed to be easy to read and usable by the widest cross-section in the community. This is an example right here. It's tough to read on the small screen here, but this is the first map that we published. This is now in its near-final draft form. This is the Fairfax Glen area. We started here because it's the simplest area, not because it's where Mayor Kohler lives.[1602.58][1602.58](laughing)
Fine.
This was the area where it had every feature we were looking to map in the fewest number of streets and was the easiest for us to run through with the developers. On the front of the map, this is important, the front side of the map, will have information on alerting and notification systems, including some updates that we've made since the Public Safety Power Shutdown, to reference the NOAA weather radios, which turn out to be one of the best alerting solutions we have when power and communications are out in the community. There's consolidated, concise information on alerting systems and some basic tips on evacuation. I really want to emphasize to everybody, I think it's important that the council and certainly the community understand that these maps are not going to show any residents secret routes out of the community. These routes, you, looking at these maps, you're quickly going to learn that you already know your evacuation route. These maps will help you potentially identify alternate routes out of your neighborhood if there are side streets that lead to the same location, which can be important to you. You should know two ways out, if there are two ways out of your neighborhood. But it's important, and we emphasize this in the text here, that your second way out is never uphill. It's never across a fire road. It's never through a locked gate. And we don't use that word "never" lightly. Firefighters never evacuate wildfires uphill. You don't try to outrun a wildfire uphill, and you don't escape a wildfire by going into a place that has yet to burn. Those are extraordinarily dangerous situations, and we emphasize this over and over. The goal is to get people downhill to the wide spaces on a valley floor, to help people identify what we're calling temporary refuge areas, which are locations, areas where residents could potentially take refuge as a last resort if there's no option to evacuate the area, along with the symbology to go along with that. On the backside is an evacuation checklist, which you'll recognize from Fire Safe Marin. This has evolved over the last three years, because we've seen so many large-scale evacuations in California. And emphasis on a quality wildfire and emergency go-kit, that's important. This is the best look you can get right now at the first of the eight individual zone maps. The Glen map, you can see the symbology's been designed to show the primary direction of travel, which in this case is always to the east. However, we've identified that if you are directed by authorities to go to the west towards White Hill in the San Geronimo Valley, that that may be an option, and the symbology follows that. All eight of the maps are now in our hand, in the draft form. We're reviewing those maps. We're adding updates to them, primarily the staircases that are in town. We do have symbols to go along with the staircases that emphasize that evacuation on foot or by bicycle should only be used as a last resort if cars are not an option. We're concerned that there are residents in the town who might believe that evacuating on foot should be a first option because of their fear, their anxiety of being on foot should be a first option because of their fear, their anxiety of being stuck or trapped in traffic in a car. We don't think that that should be something you should fear. Your car provides a huge amount of protection to you. We've emphasized this over and over again in our presentations, and we really need to get the word into the community that foot or by bicycle is truly a last-resort option during a wildfire. You are unprotected and vulnerable outside of a vehicle.
And I believe you said that in Paradise, nobody died in their cars?
Nobody died in their cars on pavement, on paved roads. If you got in your car and stayed on pavement on a paved road, nobody died. There were a handful of people who died on unpaved rural mountain roads in Paradise, inside or outside of their car. They were all elderly. We've been able to identify who the most vulnerable communities are and who needs to evacuate sooner. We've learned a lot from the last two years. The average age of the people that died in the North Bay fires in 2017 and in Paradise was 74 years old. So one of the things, you'll notice that the fonts and the typology on these maps is large because we're really aiming this at a community that might have vision impairments, might be older, might need to read these under stress.
Okay. Well, great. Thank you. Sorry for...
Thank you. Yeah, no, that's okay. These maps have all now been delivered. We're going through the first phase, and I would anticipate that they're going to be published after the end of fire season, assuming it ever ends. And these will be in people's hands and usable for the 2020 fire season.
I think you mentioned that you can access them through your phone?
Yes.
And maybe you want to talk about that? And then also, we contemplate when they're done. We would have hard copies of them in town hall. We'd have them posted on our website. But can you talk about how you would access them on your phone if cell towers work?
Yeah. Well, if there's no cellular communications, you're going to rely on those hard copies. So distributing the hard copies will be important and having them available. There'll be in eight individual zone maps, and then the citywide overview and the zone overview map, which would be a separate product. So for each community member, you would take essentially two maps, the overview map and your individual zone map. Electronically through the phone, by pointing at the images that are printed on the print maps, you can download the individual zone maps. You'll be able to do that from using your smartphone and just visiting the website to assuming you have internet access.
Okay.
It's a good product. And the cost of developing all this, you know, the total program is only for the, all eight maps, the overview maps, and a tremendous amount of back-and-forth work that Professor Janikin has given us is going to be about $4,000 for the town, which I think is a pretty incredible value.
Which is amazing. And I want to say, Michael St. John first talked to me about this. Todd had found out about it. And very quickly, I talked to our town manager about, you know, and he said, "Yeah, let's do it." And Fairfax will be in the lead on this. And so, really appreciate the work. And I'm hoping that the council will assign me to continue to work with you since I kind of started this. And I may not be mayor after much longer, but I still will be on the council. So questions for Todd? And then we'll ask folks in the audience if they have questions. Sure.
So Todd, you said that some of the steps, maybe some of the pathways, will be actually depicted on some of the maps, but not all of them. How are you deciphering which ones to depict and which...
Chief St. John, who's an expert in this, having worked in the city of Mill Valley, has actually gone out and walked all of the paths. I know, for example, John has as well...
Yeah. I worked with Michael St. John.
Did you go with Michael?
Yeah. We worked out basically, the ones that are going to be on the maps are the ones that are improved at this point.
Yes.
You know, there are a number of trails that are open, but, you know, you better wear stout hiking boots and walking stick kind of thing. And those are not on the maps, just because it's too high-risk in that situation.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, by depicting these, it's not a recommendation, and we should remember that these are considered recreational trails and not official evacuation routes.
This is true. And the symbols and the language to go along with them is really going to emphasize that. You know, I think a lot has been made between Mike and I jokingly about our disagreement on staircases as an evacuation route. Again, being exposed unprotected outside of a vehicle on a staircase with fire below you is extraordinarily dangerous. Despite what many residents seem to feel and fear, you are much safer inside of your car, protected inside of a car.
Yeah.
So other questions of Todd?
Yes. This, download the maps with a QR code on your phone. Once you do that, you have it on your phone. Is that correct?
You should, yeah.
Yes. So, you know, this is something that people would do early in preparation for this.
Yep.
Not waiting for this time when you don't have any connectivity or anything like that.
Yeah. I should emphasize that I've become interested in just the topic and this, you know, the cognitive side of this. And Professor Janikin has emphasized over and over again that it's important for people to study these maps in advance. And one of the goals, they flat-out say this, is that you should study this and get to know it in advance. The maps are designed to be able to, for you to read under stress, but they're really designed for you to be able to memorize in advance. They're simplified to the point where you should be able to look at the map prior to an event and already be able to understand your evacuation routes to learn how to make evacuation decisions before an event ever happens.
So one of the things maybe we can do is, once they're completed, which hopefully be a few months, is we could potentially do a mail-out. It might be a little difficult, but to try to do a mail-out of the overview map with your individual map and then maybe have some kind of a workshop here in this room to have more discussion about them.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. People in the audience may have questions on this, and Todd, maybe we'll ask you to step to the side. So does anyone have a question on this? If so, you can stand up at the podium.
Not really a question, but more of a suggestion. So a couple of months ago, when Jason spoke here, I followed up and spoke to Jason, and then I spoke to Mark?
Chief Brown.
Oh, okay. Michael McIntosh. And what I suggested at that time, looking at an overall map of our valley, my property is that lowland that we're talking about for excavation, right, excuse me, evacuation. So when we really have congestion and confusion, people start thinking self-preservation. How do I get out? Go downhill. They will not care the direction of the road if they're scared. They'll not care about what's planned. They're going to look for the shortest path. At that same time, when everybody's trying to go downhill, our services and people such as fire and police trying to help us are trying to go uphill. So we're going to have congestion. My property is in a unique position, that if there's a bridge at the end of Pacheco to the back of my property, we could filter everybody in coming from West Marin during this event, everybody from the community, put them on my property, and then as there's space, they can feed out over the Pastore Bridge, one by one, so that they're out of the grid, out of the confusion, in protection. And I own both sides of the creek there, so it would accommodate a bridge at the end of Pacheco to my property.
Okay. Well, I think we're, one of the things Todd is working on with Chief Tyler and Michael St. John is looking at the areas with our fire chief of where people can go to. So we'll keep that in mind. Thank you for the offer, Michael.
Yes. But what you'd need is the infrastructure in place to have the bridge. You could actually, I would not open it up for transportation, period. But if we had like a bridge to accommodate the transportation with like a big pole or something in the middle that the fire and police could pull when we need that evacuation route, we could basically get people out of the way so our service providers can get to the communities that need...
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll keep that in mind. Appreciate that. Okay. Next speaker, please. Frank? Oh, I'm sorry. I think Chief Brown was... Chief Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Mark Brown, deputy fire chief for the Ross Valley Fire Department. Good morning, or good evening. Sorry.
Yeah. I started out thinking it was the morning as well.
It feels like it sometimes, right? First, I want to applaud Fairfax's leadership in having public-friendly maps. These maps are great for the firefighters.
Right.
Not terribly digestible for the public, so I applaud your leadership. And I could not have picked two better people between Todd and Michael St. John to work on this with you guys. I do want to reemphasize the preparedness piece of it. And Todd nailed it, that these maps need to be downloaded, put on your phone, studied prior to an event ever happening. Panic is what kills people under these events. And the more you prepare before the event, the less panicked you will be during the event. If you're not panicked, you're going to make better decisions. Panicked people make poor decisions. And so your preparedness needs to go well beyond these maps, and that is being prepared to evacuate. First of all, you need to be signed up for all the notification systems and understand how those notification systems work. My house was evacuated during the 2017 firestorms. My wife, and my wife knows I'm not going to be there when catastrophe hit in our house. So she had everything packed and ready to go. And so when the evacuation notice came, it was a calm, load up the car, and leave. And we've started doing that under the high-risk fire danger days. I'll be driving to work, and my wife is going, "What kind of conditions do we have?" And I'll tell her what kind of conditions. And she gets all the go-kits, and she gets all the valuables pre-staged. And so when the evacuation order does happen, it's just an orderly load-up and go. The panic levels go down, and good decisions are made.
Great. Well, thank you, Chief Brown. I think one of the pieces on the maps that you can't see as well is the reverse side, which talks about the prep. And then on the front side shows the alerts to sign up for and all that. So I think you're absolutely right. I think we learned that through this power outage, that we can all be better prepared, and it's kind of a little bit of a dry run for a true emergency. Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Frank Iger, 13 Minute Way, Fairfax. We were just evacuated for four days out of the winery in Healsburg. There was a lineup of engines that came from all over the, all over the western United States, and they stopped that fire a quarter of a mile from the winery, to Los Amigos Road, Limerick Lane, and Arata Lane.
Excellent.
That's where they fought, that's where they fought the hardest. Because if it would have crossed 101, it had gone all the way to the coast. But on the issue of evacuation, this is a very good start for Fairfax, this mapping. And I'm pleased that Fairfax is in the forefront of it. But just a few other issues. We need voice-over commands for all of our emergency sirens. Number two, we need propane-powered generators to power the sirens during power blackouts. Three, we need solar-assisted evacuation route signs with arrows for nighttime evacuations, especially when electricity is out and it's smoky and folks don't know exactly where they're going to get confused at nighttime. We need evacuation plans for our two senior housing apartment complexes, Bennett House and Victory Village. I mean, we need, really need, and I think our public service agencies can help them with evacuation plans, but it's really important. And since NICSIL and Marin Alert did not work with electricity and cell phones, we need some alternative means to notify in these neighborhoods. And maybe it's the emergency sirens with voice-over commands. And lastly, on the evacuation routes, Fairfax requires 12-foot clearance for our roads. And we really need that enforced. I've drive through some areas where you can barely get your car through, and we need enforcement of that 12-foot clearance, number one. And probably, our police and fire department should look at as to whether or not 12-foot of clearance is sufficient in some of these hillside areas to try to get people out. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Mallory?
There, there's a list that went around on Nextdoor Facebook. It was, somebody sent an evacuation list of what you can take, what you should take, and insurance forms and passports and things. I have a copy. I'll be glad to send it to you guys, and maybe we can print it and send it out with that.
Actually, I think that's part of the materials that are on the back. So it's on there.
All right. And the second part is, we have these still, third year I'm asking, we have these blocked foot passages between streets that are dead-end streets to go to another street. If people can't get in a car and there's, and there are huge trees blocking the little passages, there's definitely one on Willow, between Maple and Willow. These need to be addressed because there are people that may not be able to get their cars out. They have to get through a street that will go down to Sir Francis Drake. And I think, this has not been addressed for years. How do we do it? How do we make either the owners do it, or the towns do it, or the town do it? It's important. And I think there are a lot more than just one of these in Fairfax that needs to be open and cleared. And there was one other thing. Oh, and people who are relying on landlines, when you talk to AT&amp;T or Comcast, they say, "Yeah, you could have a landline." All they mean is it's a landline that goes in the wall. But when you ask them, "Will this landline work if the power goes out?", it doesn't. And the only kind of landline are the old-fashioned landlines. And I personally have an old Princess phone that I plug in when my answering machine doesn't work. But, but people need to be aware that they're, they can't just pick up a phone, especially if it's an answering machine phone, and get anybody to answer because it will not work when the power goes out.
The other thing, just my experience, I've had a landline with, and I have an old, beautiful Princess phone. And the landlines went down for AT&amp;T. There was an LA Times article that pointed out about the cellphone, you know, failure that where Marin was the highest, but it also talked about AT&amp;T. And we had a problem at our police station where the chief had to get AT&amp;T out. So my beautiful Princess phone did not work during the power outage.
Is yours hooked up to your computer?
No, it's not a voice-over IP. It always worked, but it didn't work during that power outage.
Mine worked, so...
Well, that's good to know.
Call me.
Yeah. I'll call you next time. Okay. Thank you. Stephanie?
Hi there. Stephanie Hellman, 26 Redwood Road. So I just want to commend you. This is phenomenal. I was just watching this on the, my screen at home, and I had to come down and share my thoughts. I think it's amazing. I think the symbology is really effective. I want to share an experience that I had shared with a lot of residents as I was canvassing when we were talking about fire preparedness. So I was in New York City for 9/11, and I was watching the towers burn from Long Island City, which is across the East River, and we all evacuated. And I made it onto the subway, and Giuliani bumped us off the subway. He closed off the, you know, the subways. And I was in a part of Brooklyn I had never been in before. And so, as you were saying, you can be very disoriented, and you cannot know where you are. And so I'm just wondering if, you know, if we put these on our cell phones, and we tape these to our fridge, or we put these where we, these are for our own neighborhoods, but my own experience, I was in a neighborhood I'd never been in before, you know? And so I'm wondering if, if we can get funding for this. We need evacuations plans marked. We need, we need this symbology marked because landmarks can be burned down. We need to have this, we need to know where to go.
I think that's something that may be step two.
Yeah.
And so appreciate that. I've talked about that before, and there's pros and cons to it because at times, people follow things blindly because they are confused. But I think that's probably step two for next year.
You could be elderly, you could be a visitor, you could be in a total state of panic and not know where you are, and not know where the app is on your phone. Like, you just can't really anticipate what state of mind you're going to be in. And so I just wanted to share that experience with you. I was in, like I said, in a part of Brooklyn, and I had to rely on the kindness of strangers to get me home. I had to walk three miles home, so... But anyway, I really commend the work that you've done here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to commend Todd and Michael St. John for all their work, but also the Disaster Council, the town manager who supported moving forward on this. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you guys and get these done in the next few months. So thank you very much, Todd, for coming.
I have one thing to add, and then, Garrett, is it okay if I quickly add about the grant? I just, you know...
Oh, yes. I wanted you to talk about this.
It relates to evacuation. And real quickly, because I think it might help answer some of the questions that folks asked. The County of Marin, Department of Public Works, Office of Emergency Services, Marin County Fire Department, all of the Marin Fire and Law Agencies have signed on. We've applied for a grant through Caltrans, an evacuation planning grant. It's the first of its kind, we think, in the state. It would be grant-funded to look at Marin's evacuation issues, looking at everything It would be grant-funded to look at Marin's evacuation issues, looking at everything from public transit, transportation issues, roadway widths, road issues, making sure that what we've identified as primary and secondary evacuation routes are the correct routes, looking at things like traffic signals, battery backups for traffic signals, understanding which signals work, the hub, which we commended during the power outage that was up and running. But identifying which intersections are must-haves during an evacuation, so that we can potentially look at technology and infrastructure upgrades to keep them running. This grant, it's a $3.25 million grant. It would just look at identifying our evacuation needs and developing a prioritized list. And then we hope that the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, should it pass in the March ballot, would be in a place to potentially fund or help implement some of the recommendations. So I think virtually everything that was asked out here is something that we were hoping to address through this study.
Just one more thing. You met with Garrett and I, and also informed the Disaster Council about the grant, the million-dollar grant to do limb cutting, to clear ways. Maybe you can just briefly mention that.
Yeah. Fire Safe Marin has been awarded a million-dollar grant from CAL FIRE to work in eight communities in the Ross Valley, all on the east slopes of Mount Tam. So unfortunately, if you're on the east side of Sir Francis Drake, we won't be touching you with this round of funding. But it will be work to improve evacuation routes, primarily to open up access, any vegetation that's impinging on the roadway, that would force vehicles to drive closer to the center line, or force fire engines to drive closer to the center line. This will help with the passing and movement of traffic during evacuations, and maybe, in some cases, limit the amount of heat that a roadway might be exposed to during a fire itself. That work will be happening in Fairfax, I think, about over the next six months at the December meeting. I think we're going to have it on the agenda to approve the funding of the grant, and the town will participate by paying the contractors upfront. And Fire Safe Marin will reimburse the town through the grant from the state.
Great.
So Todd, I just wanted to let folks know who may be listening, that the neighborhoods that will be able to make use of this money, where this money is allocated to, are the Firewise Neighborhoods, Cascade Canyon, Deer Park, Manor Hill, and is it Forest?
Forest Avenue, yeah.
Right. So if any of you live in those areas, and you'd like to know more about what's coming, please contact your Firewise leads for your neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And you'll learn more, as we're going to start doing outreach door-to-door again, to let people know that this is coming.
This is, it's going to cover, in Fairfax, and then bleeding into San Anselmo, especially on the Forest Avenue neighborhood, we're going to cover about 15 miles of roadway. It'll be about $300,000, give or take. And that's going to cover about 90 days of work from Tree Services. We're going to use it, our preferred contractor happens to be Fairfax-based. They've done a great job for us, and Corder Madera and the Kent Woodlands already. And we're hoping to get started with that pretty soon here.
Great. Thank you. Richard, did you have a question for Todd before he takes off? Because we have the chief wanting to do a quick presentation.
Just very quick. Is there anything in any of the sort of evacuation planning that's emerging where we would actually have personnel out on the streets? Because it's not a big mystery in Fairfax what are the main streets that people are going to get out. It's Bellinas and Rodway and Sir Francis Drake. And so if we have a kind of a free-for-all, whether we have great maps, and everyone's going in the right direction at the right time, we're likely to have kind of gridlock, unless we have some type of professional personnel that are sort of kind of flowing, keeping the traffic flowing in some kind of meaningful way, and making sure that people aren't, you know, bottlenecking. So I'm just wondering if that's any, that's part of any of the discussion of the planning process.
Chief, do you want to respond to that?
With staffing available, we would have, that's part of what we would be doing. The fire personnel are going to deal with the fire, the event, and we're going to do our best to get people out as they need to get out. And it also involves our CERT people in town, coordinated by Cindy Swift. So it's just a matter of getting the word out when we need them, and getting our people involved, and helping move the flow out.
Great. All right. So the chief is going to talk about our emergency operations plan briefly. And I want to thank the chief, who is here at my request. He had some other appointment, and he was able to reschedule. So thank you, chief. Go forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So the Disaster Council was convened this quarter for the purpose of updating, reviewing and updating the emergency operations plan, as we refer to it as the EOP. The EOP identifies emergency planning policies and responses. It has five general parts. General information is part one. Part two is, deals with initial response. Part three deals with extended responses. Part four is checklist, EOC checklist, and part five deals with recovery operations. The EOP also includes an evacuation plan. Both of these documents are intended for internal use. Sometimes, it's seemingly not clear to the public, the benefit and value of them, but they do both have incredible value to us as first responders, police and fire. We do post them on the website, so people can see them. And that sometimes causes confusion, because they don't understand them. But we try to do our best to explain it. Our policy is to convene the Disaster Council and review the documents each four years. The Fairfax Police Department maintains these documents. We do, in addition to each four years, we do internal reviews each year. Mayor Kohler first convened, well, not first, but the last time we convened was in 2015, at the mayor's direction. And we updated it at that time. And four years later, 2019, Mayor Kohler again convened the Disaster Council. We first met in October this year, to update and review the plans. Part of the update included nomenclature changes, organizational changes throughout the county, and resources that we use and need. We examined it for content and accuracy, reference to other documents, grant applications, et cetera. We reviewed for new, or updated, or to update outdated agency phone numbers, organizational names, as well as updating the maps. The maps that, again, aren't really, and the fire chief mentioned this, they're not necessarily that beneficial to the public, but they're beneficial to us.
Chief, you might want to stand up, so people can see them.
Sure.
Sitting down there, not everyone can see you in the back. Thank you.
So we have these maps, that we have them in the police station, in the Emergency Operations Center, and we also carry them in our patrol cars. The fire department also has them in their cars. And they're very beneficial to us, because they talk about, or they're referencing for us notification and evacuation areas and plots. And we can also use that for alert notifications through Alert Marin and the Marin EOC. That's generally my little report on the updated emergency operations plan. And again, we do want to do this every four years, and we have done that two times under Mayor Kohler's direction. And I think in 15, we did a reasonable job. I think in this year, we've done much better. And I also want to thank Cindy Swift. Is she still here?
She's in the back.
She's back there. And the mayor, too. But Cindy was, is part of the Disaster Council, and she did a really good job and created a lot of work for me on a lot of...
I think I helped on that.
Well, yeah. Well, you're always a lot of help. But she created a lot of work for me, but found a lot of things that needed to be corrected and updated. So I thank her for that.
And I think the other thing we learned is, the town has had kind of a insurance policy contract with a group to get us up and running. And I believe we added that within a week or so, to get us completely up and running with computers and everything in the event of a disaster. And that's something new that has happened since Garrett Toy has been our town manager. So in the event of a disaster, we can be up and running in a couple of days. So that's great news. So thank you, chief. Did you have something else to add?
Very, very briefly, because we've taken a lot of time here. I just want to comment that the town manager has applied for a state grant just recent, I think you've submitted it, right? For two, to try to get two generators off a streamlined state grant process. And what we want to do is include a generator to the youth center as part...
It's called the community center. We changed the name a while ago.
So it can be used as a community gathering place in an event as needed, as well as it's, it's an extension of the EOC. So we're trying to get that on that. And it'd be a long story to explain, but the second generator, we want to attach, although it goes to, I think, Mallory's comment about the telephone. We want to get a generator, a permanent generator, attached to the AT&amp;T box, which is directly across the street from us here. If you look out in the parking lot now, there's a portable generator there that I had AT&amp;T bring in. What happens is, especially in Fairfax, the AT&amp;T, they're called pair gain boxes. And they're powered by electricity, and they have battery backups inside. When those battery backups die, the AT&amp;T box dies. So even if you have an old-fashioned phone that doesn't use any electricity, your phone more than likely will go down in Fairfax, which happened to a lot of people, including the police department and town hall phones. So part of the process is, we want to get a permanent generator put on there, so that it'll just kick on once those, if the power's out, and the battery backups go down in that box. And lastly, I would just like to comment that although we keep hammering home the message, and I think Todd mentioned it, and I think the fire chief mentioned it as well, we need people to sign up for NICSIL and Alert Marin. We also need them to sign up for the PG&E alerts, so that they can get hammered with, from all of us, with notifications. NICSIL, the day of the power outage, our internal NICSIL subscriptions to the ZIP code 9493 increased by 500 people on the first day. That means probably our residents, anybody can sign up for it, but an increase of 500 people in one day tells us that a lot of our people still are not signed up for NICSIL, and they really need to be.
And I think the other thing is, if we are successful in obtaining this grant, I think we want to do the charging stations in the community center.
That's the goal, yes.
So there'll be more room than the little hallway, which was great, and we had a lot of folks there. But it'd be nice to spread it out a little bit.
And one very last comment.
All right.
Everybody has their preference on cell phones, and this is no advertisement for anybody, but as many know, Verizon has the best service in town under the best of times. And in the worst of times, during the PSPS, we internally, for the police, have Verizon cell phones. They stayed up the whole time.
Okay, mine didn't.
Well, ours did. But I'm not saying, you know, it's not an advertisement, I'm just saying, AT&amp;T has bad coverage, and a lot of people, including some of our employees who have AT&amp;T, they went down pretty quick. And our Verizon phone stayed up the whole time.
Mine was working well.
Internet didn't work very good at times, but the actual phone worked, which brings us back to NICSIL alerts via text. The Verizon worked pretty good.
Okay. Well, thank you, chief.
And AT&amp;T, I would say, was definitely having more problems than this station, because we had, at our house, right really close to here, we had landline service throughout the PSPS. Then the power came on, we got it on in the morning, and then the landline went dead. And we get our internet through that landline as well. So everything was dead, but the landline was down after the power. So they were having problems all over.
So let's kind of wrap this up, because it's after 8:00, and we haven't even moved on to open time. Are there any quick questions for the chief? Otherwise, we'll move on.
Mayor, I have a quick, it's a comment, not for you, chief, but I think it's just in general. We have 30 kilowatts of, yeah, 30 kilowatts of solar panels on top of the pavilion. And right now, the pavilion, work on the pavilion is tied up in the FEMA grant, which is doing earthquake stuff. And once we get done with that, then we have a lot more leeway in what we can do. But one of the developments that's come up in the last couple of years is they now have a grid, well, basically, an inverter either works as a grid intertie, or as a way to charge batteries. And I think that that would be a very resilient thing for us to have as a battery system up at the pavilion, that one of these new inverters would be able to keep those batteries charged, and also monitor that in conjunction with tying in with the grid. And I think that that would be a really wise thing for us to explore going forward.
Okay. Well, thank you for that comment, John. Okay, so let's move on. Thank you very much, chief. And we're going to move on to open time for public expression. And just to address the council on matters not on the agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address, which are optional. Depending on the number of speakers, individuals have two to three minutes to speak, four to five minutes if representing a group. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any unagendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be in an emergency nature, or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. A couple of things, since it is kind of moving on late, I'd like to keep folks to two minutes. I know that we've spent a lot of time talking, but let's see what we can do. Okay, Sierra?
I'll try and talk really fast. A few different things, because you've only got two minutes. Okay, not that fast. There are certainly noise issues with generators and other things for like the power out that should be somehow addressed between neighbors. I know of people that had really hard times with generators next to their houses, because they were like as far away from whoever had the generator's house as they could get them, but pretty much in the neighbor's faces. Also, generators, there's also safety issues, carbon monoxide and whatnot. People say, "I'll put it in the basement," or put it, you know? That's bad news. I've had carbon monoxide poisoning. You don't want to go there. What John was talking about with solar, solar is pretty much worthless if the power's down, depending on your system. I lived at a place in New Mexico that had its own solar system. I mean, you can arrange a solar system for 12 volt, 20 volt, 4 volt, whatever. There's ways to set up a solar system that'll still function when the power's out, rather than being totally dead. I think there's some education to be done with like the fire safe and clearing. There's people that get upset when you go in and clear the land, or clear out underneath the eucalyptus, and you clear the broom and whatever, because it's maybe not as pretty. But I think there's a way to educate people that we can either clear the land and do it ourselves proactively, or we can let a fire come through and do it, and get the resulting mudslides and everything else that go along with it, plus everything else burns. So, I mean, we've got a lot of clearing to do, but I think people get upset when they see things getting cleared, and we need to work on that. Halloween was great. I'd like, well done, good town. I'd like to ask that the bus pad, the bus shelter, get moved up in the agenda.
I already moved it up on the agenda.
Okay. I wasn't here for that. And the last thing is, I've offered this before, Perry Park Playground, in between the two structures, there's a little bridge that was on cables that's no longer together. And I've looked at that four or five years ago. I've talked about it other times. It's still boarded up. It'd be $100 or $200 to replace those cables with cables or chains, and rebuild the thing as it was, and make it basically be safe and usable. So I'm just suggesting, it's like, I'm willing to do that. I'll just charge you for materials, but why not open the thing up?
I think you should go to Park and suggest that, the Park Commission?
I've suggested it various places. It'd just be nice for you to happen.
Well, I think that's the right place, because they're doing the fundraising and work for Perry Park. Great. Thank you, Sierra.
I need a little more, two minutes, I want us to...
Can you press the button? Thank you.
This is my visual aid. This is what I'm calling, coming about. This is the street I live on. It looks like it's the Third World, but it's Fairfax. So if you'll just indulge me briefly. I live on Berry Trail, the tobacco road of Fairfax. It's the worst street in our beloved city, and I'm confident it's the worst street in all of Marin County. Fairfax's excuse is that in 1930, Berry Trail was designated not a city-maintained street, and therefore, any maintenance or repair would fall to the residents. I believe this designation is arbitrary and capricious. It is also outdated in the extreme. In 1930, my house and the house next door were brothels. Squatters used to camp on the hill bordering the trail. Suffice it to say that in the intervening 90 years, the clientele has improved markedly, and so has the tax base. I pay $11,000 annual property tax, and at least two homes have sold in the last year for considerably more than mine, significantly increasing the Berry Trail's tax revenue. I understand that there's never enough money, and that the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. But I also believe in representative government, and Berry Trail has been neglected and ignored for over a century, and I'm here to suggest that the bill has come due. I've dealt with the dirt, rocks, falling concrete, and exposed rebar for six years, incurring considerable expenses and loss. Only one recycling truck can negotiate this hazardous terrain, so all of our recycling is thrown together, ostensibly sorted in... is thrown together ostensibly sorted in Santa Fel, but probably winding up in landfill. Anyone who cares about the environment should find this loathsome. The fire department told us that in the event of a fire, they can't get down Berry Trail in its present condition, and we're on our own. It doesn't have to be this way, nor should it be. I've spoken to Mark Lockaby ad nauseam, and been assured that there's no money for Berry Trail. I've spoken to the town, the county, the state, pavers, contractors, I've paid for patches four times myself. I've been going in circles for six years and getting nowhere. I'm told this is no one's problem but Berry Trail's. Well, I don't believe that. We are a community, and a very unique one at that, and Berry Trail is a unique part of its fabric, of part of what makes it uncommon and special. This is our town, too. I understand the council's limitations and protocols prohibiting action on un-agendized issues. This is all I'm asking for. I would like you to drive up Tamil Pius Avenue to Berry Trail and see it for yourself, and then tell me how this is acceptable, and how this is fair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Next speaker. Anna, you can pass that on to the clerk.
Mallory Guidahan Willow Avenue. I've been on the Affordable Housing Committee for a number of years. We've met once, I think, maybe not in the last two years. And I really want that to change. There's been a lot of issues about affordable housing, and we've never met, except a very long time ago, Peter. So I, whoever takes over now, would like that to be addressed. And if the Affordable Housing Committee could maybe take care of something like Bennett House during crises, and we volunteer, and we see that people are safe, and they're having enough food, and they have people visiting them, I think that would be a really good thing for the Affordable Housing Committee to, to do. And I, I was listening when you said, Barbara, that there were good spirits, that people were in good spirits.
I said many, not all.
Well, I don't, I think many weren't, and I think there are more that weren't. And I just want this to be addressed, so people who are suffering, or who can't get out, or who are in wheelchairs, and the elevators aren't working, they get visits, they get food, they get care, because I think that's really important. The other thing that I want to say, and it's a little bit personal, is I was watching, and I, and I got feedback from somebody who was trying to say something at the last meeting. And before he could say anything, it was Morgan, and he got cut off before you really understood what he was talking about. It's hard for many to people to come up here and talk, it's daunting. And I really would like more patience, more respect, and more cooperation for people, whether you agree with them or like them or not, to have a platform where they can just talk and not be humiliated or put down, or rushed.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jessica.
Hello, Jessica Green. I, I have a problem with the way people are not being notified about the wall property stuff. All of a sudden, we have to register online on some little link of the town, instead of a mail-out like I had to pay for, for just putting a shed on the hill to mail all the people in the town, all the neighbors of the property, when the planning commission was going to discuss something about my project. And yet, all of a sudden, with this Miranda Heights thing, we got to register online, and, and all the people don't know that they're supposed to do that, that used to get notified. So I think it's, it's, it's not very clear, and a lot of people won't know that they're supposed to register online. And when I asked Ben Berto about it, he said, well, I don't have everybody's email address. But I had to pay $130 for labels so it could go out in the mail. So I think it's a very important project that, that everybody that lives in the neighborhood should be notified. And I think the fact that things are changed is because you guys don't want people to come and, and put, have input on this. That's what my feeling is.
Okay, well, thank you. So Ben, I guess I want to say one thing, is the reason the website was set up so that there would be a place to find information, but I think you're raising a valid point. Ben, maybe one of the things we can do is send a postcard out to folks, reminding them, there has been no specific discussion yet, and reminding them about the website, and that's how you get updates. So at least, not everybody is avidly reading our website, but hopefully more folks will, and if they have questions, if they don't have internet, that they can contact someone.
So, just as clarification.
Okay.
There is no action taken, so that's why.
Correct.
Specifically, Ms. Green had an application to the planning commission, so notice goes out to 300 feet. So for this, what we've been trying to, with the neighborhood, is let them know, sign up on the emails, and we'll give you some information, specifically on the item, on the consent calendar, but specifically to let people know, this item's not on this meeting tonight.
Right.
Which is a little odd, it's an item saying that it's not this meeting, it's the next meeting. So that's what we're trying to do, is get the information out. We can send a postcard, but then the question is, how, 300, 500 feet, or do we just send out next door and just remind people to sign up?
Well, I think one of the suggestions would be, yes, there is no action at this point, but to send a postcard out about how to register online to get updates as they're coming out. And maybe, as, as Jessica had to do for her project, use that kind of area, and maybe a little broader. I mean, you guys can talk more about it, but I think we always assume, in this world of the internet, that everybody is paying attention, and so if we can get more information out there, that would be helpful.
Why don't we just, it's going to be a, a lot of properties, I would prefer, why don't we just do a bulk mailing, a postcard to everyone in town? We could tell them to sign up.
That's a great idea.
And then they'll save a few, few dollars, and everyone would get it.
That would be great. Let's do that.
I, I just also want to point out that the internet and the website that was set up for Miranda Heights, the wall property, is in addition to the public mailings that will go out when this is scheduled for consideration. There will be multiple hearings, people will receive mailed notices, and there will be many of those. So what we're doing with the website is kind of unprecedented, where we're saying, hey, if we're going to have new communication, new information submitted by the applicant, if you sign up on that site, and the link is put in the staff report for tonight's meeting, and has been put in every agenda item where this has been discussed. So if you sign up for that, you will get information about that project as it occurs, regardless of whether there's a hearing scheduled, but you will receive the written notice.
So I think the, the bulk notice, the bulk mailing should point that out, that when specific actions will be taken, there will be mailings. Renee, did you want to add something?
Just for clarification, so when people send you their email, say they want to be notified about anything that's going on with the wall property, and then they will receive an email when there's any update whatsoever, anything we put on the website, anything that's scheduled for any discussion.
Correct, and in point of fact, even though there's a, a distance when we send out the, the written mailed notices, if you're on the website, regardless of where you live, you will get that notification also electronically. So this is a way for any interested parties, anywhere, to get that notice. So it sort of is a, it can act as a duplicate if you live in the neighborhood, where you'll be getting the, the written notices, or if you live somewhere else in the town where you might necess, not necessarily get the written notice. But yes, once you get on that list, you will receive all the notifications.
So could you loud and clear let people know, for whoever's listening, or whoever's here, exactly what they should send to where in order to get on that list?
I think it'll be on the bulk mailing.
I just, for the, in the meantime.
Town, town website. All you have to do is go on the town website, under the planning department, under projects, and there's a Miranda Heights page. You click on it, and you sign up on the news, you sign up to receive information, and that gets into a constant contact list, and that's how we send out the info.
Yeah, I, I could read it. It's townoffairfax.org backslash major projects backslash.
Nobody will remember that, but that's great.
Follow the website, follow the projects.
I think the point, Mayor, if they're listening now.
Okay, Morgan. And Morgan, I want to publicly apologize to you, it was a misunderstanding on my part, and I have apologized to you privately, but I will do it again.
That was very gracious of you. I'm Morgan Hall, and I live at 20 Wash Lane, and I think that everybody is probably pretty pleased that Measure F passed. I personally am a little bit disappointed that seniors were not granted exemptions for that, but that's just the way it went. But I, I think it was an unnecessary liberty that was taken, and I think some others were taken, too, one of which is calling a, an 11-year a renewal of a five-year plan. It's like, that's just weasel wording in my book. And in addition, I happen to notice that, let's just say, these flyers that went out talking about the importance of Measure F to the town, every one of them referred to Measure F as a parcel tax. I also know that in the text of all of these of Measure F, nowhere is it called a parcel tax. It's called a special tax, a special tax. And I know that in my particular case, let's just say, if it were my tax burden, if it were simply a parcel tax over 11 years, it'd be about $2,700. But the way it's structured as a special tax, it's almost $10,000. There's a big difference. And I just wonder, if something like that, is that legal? I mean, it's like false advertising, it's like, you know, vote for the parcel tax. But in fact, it's not a parcel tax.
It is a parcel tax, it's $195 per parcel. So I'm not sure I understand.
No.
Oh, you're being taxed by unit. Okay.
Yeah, it's not a parcel tax.
Okay.
And I don't know how people interpret it, but it's, it's another example of sort of a little bit of room for interpretation. It was a liberty, I think, that was taken.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Valerie Hood, Fairfax. The means of ensuring democracy, resisting tyranny, and demagoguery, that, is to make sure that every vote is counted. As a poll worker at the Fairfax precinct with the highest voter turnout, I'd like to thank Fairfax for turning out in a pretty good numbers, in an election predicted to have a very small turnout. Many voters experienced frustration when they arrived at the women's club. They expected to vote at the polls as usual, but found they had to cast provisional ballots, votes instead, because unbeknownst to them, their method of voting had been changed to vote by mail. Some hadn't received a ballot, and some forgot to bring their ballot or their envelope. But many have been voting here for years, never vote by mail, and they just couldn't believe what was happening to them. The cause of these not requested changes will be investigated with the county elections department. The number of provisional ballots was 20% of ballots cast in what we believe to be the highest voting precinct, 20301, which means that after today, there are still at least 500 or more uncounted votes to go. This close council race is yet to be determined. The votes still to be counted include those vote-by-mail ballots that arrived at the civic center this past Saturday, Monday, and postmarked by Tuesday. After these votes are counted and confirmed, then the provisional ballots will be checked against the vote by mail, and then counted. So it's estimated that there may be as many as 500 uncounted ballots at this time, and there might be more. So anyone wishing to track their vote can do so by using the receipt, you tore off your ballot before you put it in the box, and contacting the county election office. You can also go to the civic center and observe the counting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jody.
Good evening, council. Jody Timms, 290 Cascade, and your representative to the Commission on Aging, giving a quick report. I, too, wanted to really start tonight by just acknowledging last week's PSPS, and the fact that that was really a terrifying and very difficult experience for a number of our most vulnerable folks here in Fairfax. Certainly not all of them, and not all of the folks at Bennett House, but other places up in the hills. So I just want to say, too, that had I known about the situation, I could have, within the first 24 hours, really helped make a difference, because I was working in the, in the emergency operations center, and I was on calls twice a day with over 25 different organizations in Marin that were supporting folks, low-income folks, senior folks, AFN, AFN folks across the county. So we really do have some communication and some coordination, it's not enough, and there's a lot, there are work groups happening. I was in a meeting for two and a half hours today, looking at how to better coordinate things. I think we can make a lot of improvements, so just wanted to mention that. Also, some of us locally have been talking about the disaster council and a possible subcommittee that could focus on, on the needs of older adults. So if there are folks, and I've been approached by some in the town, if you have an interest in, in volunteering and being part of that initiative, you can contact me, jodytims@comcast.net, or through the town's website at Age Friendly. So we really want to make this experience different and better for everybody in Fairfax, but certainly older folks and frail folks, so that's really a focus. We have 219 people on the Age Friendly Fairfax newsletter, so we're using that as a means of communication, but there are many lists, there's not going to be one list that has everybody that we can find and support and help, but there's a number of actions being taken, so just wanted to report briefly on that. And of course, continue to reach out to your neighbors. That's really one of the best ways to support folks before and after disaster. So also, the Commission on Aging meeting is tomorrow, it's on living and housing options in Marin. Speakers from the Redwoods, Whistlestop, and Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative will be speaking, so that's at Whistlestop tomorrow at 10:00. The Ross Valley seniors tomorrow at lunch will be celebrating their 13th anniversary, so that'll be a fun time to have lunch and socialize for older adults. The forum this month will be this Friday, because it's the second Friday, that will be on cognitive health, and how to support better memory through lifestyle practices. So that's at the library from, on Friday from 1:00 to 2:00. The library is also picking up often a fourth event. This month, they're doing how to create a tissue-paper floral arrangement for your Thanksgiving table. So if that sounds like fun, that'll be on Friday, November 22nd. Breakfast with Friends is on November 20th, as usual, at the Barefoot. Also, we did put together a flyer on emergency tips for older adults, that's in the back as well. And finally, I just, oh, the Task Force for Age Friendly does meet once a month at Bennett House, that will be this Friday as well, at 9:15. And I just wanted to also thank Mayor Kohler for putting on the consent calendar, our score card, which is an update, nearly finished, of our three-year implementation plan. We've done a lot, there's a lot more to do, and we could use more help, so help us out if you can. Thanks.
Thank you, Jody. Next speaker, Mark.
Mark Bell, Domingo Avenue. I just need a clarification, I understand that open time for public expression is about matters not on the agenda.
Correct.
But you have things on the consent calendar, and then especially items that I bring up to poll, you don't poll them. So when should I speak on something? Because I'm looking at two items on the consent calendar I'd like to see addressed.
Well, I'll be bringing up the consent calendar next, and then you can ask for things to be polled, but the council makes a decision on having things polled. So it'll just be a second. Do you have other things on, in open time you wanted to cover?
No, that was it, I'm just, otherwise I'd use a I'm just, otherwise I'd use open time to use my comments that I would use on the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak in open time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Thank you, everyone. And now we'd like to get to the consent calendar. Were there any members of the council had questions, or specifically had an item to pull from consent?
Yes. I think it is important that we pull off number five for a discussion and for some clarification. So I would, I know there's a lot that we've moved around in order to be able to address everybody's concerns who are here in the room, but it would be, I would rather not put it at the end.
Well, I don't think we have to put it at the end. I think we would put it after item 13 and 14 and before the public hearing.
Okay, that would be my request.
Okay, anyone else have a question, or seeing none? Okay. Would any members of the public, do you have a question on an item on consent, or did you want to request that an item is pulled? Sometimes you can just ask a question or make a comment.
Well, I'm looking at number eight, and I'm just wondering if that's giving the town manager a raise? And if it is, then I definitely think it should be pulled. And also, I'd like a clarification of number 10. What exactly does that mean?
Okay, well, let me bring it back to the council on item eight. And I want to also say, item eight, yes, it is a raise, but also, we have made a decision that we will put this on the agenda and wait till the next meeting to finalize potentially, so there's time for people to spend more time looking at it. But as far as item 10, that's for a special situation where somebody is not just acting out of class, but they're doing a special supervisory assignment, which requires more skill level. So in that case, a person would get a 10% differential. And that's a very limited type thing.
Okay, so that's limited. So when we're looking at eight, we're looking at a raise for the town manager?
Correct.
And so you said that you're going to kind of pull this and put this on a future agenda?
Okay, so the council, the council makes the decision whether or not to pull. You've made a request, and I'll bring it back to the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'll be interesting.
So I'll bring it back to the council. Does the council want to pull item eight?
Well, I will say, I think it was well explained. Actually, number 10 was well explained as well in the report.
No, I'm talking, we're not talking about pulling number 10, but it's number eight.
But, and, you know, we, this is a raise that has not, there hasn't been one for a long time, and this is, as I say, well explained, and I don't, I'm not sure we need to discuss it further.
So at this point, you don't see the need for pulling it?
I would actually, I'd like to see it pulled and put it at the end of the agenda, but I'm perfectly happy discussing it in the interest of transparency.
Okay, well, why don't we do this?
Our second Peter's.
Okay. Rather than moving it to the end of the agenda, let's move it after, what have we moved? Okay, so we've moved item five after item 13 and 14. Let's move it to after, so after item five. This is getting confusing. So we're going to take up 13 and 14 before we do item five, and then we'll do item eight after that.
And 11 after that.
And the public hearing after that. Okay, so with that, bringing it back to the council, I just want to mention something on the Age Friendly scorecard. I've been honored to be a member of Age Friendly for a number of years, and I think, I know everybody's busy, but you ought to take a look at what Age Friendly has been doing to help our older adults, and some of the things we've done for intergenerational projects. And there's been an amazing amount accomplished. We can always do more, but there's quite a lot that's been accomplished, so take a look at that. It's posted on the town website when you have a chance. So with that, I'd like a motion on the consent calendar, and that would be minus items five and eight, but also reminder that we have a supplement on item nine. So make sure when you make that motion that you say with the supplement for item nine.
Move to approve the consent calendar with the supplement to item nine, however, with pulling items five and eight from the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that was Peter Lacks with the second Vice Mayor Goddard. Okay, I have to apologize, but I have to take a five-minute break, so can we please do that? And we will move on to, oh my God, I'm confused now.
Item 15.
What item, what item are we doing? Item 12, scenic, and then we'll do the parcade.
Okay, and then the, okay.
I mean, the bus stop. Okay. All right, we're going to try for five minutes, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Okay, let's get Vice Mayor Goddard up here. Damian, are we ready to go? Okay, thank you. All right, so just to make sure that everybody knows where we're at on the agenda, we are taking up item 12 first, and that's discuss, consider, award of contract for the Upper Scenic Road pavement rehabilitation project. And I want to point out to the council members that there is a supplement, and there should be something out on the safe out there as well. It's a little confusing. We have a lot of paper up here, and we've moved so much around. But Garrett, would you like to do the staff report, please?
Sure. Item 12 is adopt a resolution, awarding a contract with Majoran Gelati for the scenic road pavement rehabilitation project in an amount not to exceed $127,127. Oh, I didn't, I didn't know both the numbers were the same. Threw me off. Okay, anyway, what this project entails?
Okay, let's, maybe we should start all over. That was very confusing.
Okay, so basically, you're adopting a resolution to award a bid to Majoran Gelati for the scenic road pavement rehabilitation project.
Okay, great.
So that's what the item's for. And so what the project entails, it basically entails going from around Ridge Road and the scenic intersection and going 1,000 linear feet north on Upper Scenic Road. So it's a pavement, standard pavement project where you're going to grind and repave. This project is actually phase two of the scenic road rehabilitation project. Phase one, as you may recall, was doing scenic from Bay, actually from Suppero Lane to Bay Road. That was phase one. We did that last fiscal year, so this is phase two. We actually opened the bids on Friday of last week at 11:00, and received four bids, and the low bid was from Majoran Gelati. It was for $127,127. We've confirmed that they're the lowest responsible bidder, and the bid is actually lower than the engineer's estimate, which is about $140,000. And so the project is budgeted in your CIP project, and what you would do is, if you adopt a resolution, then we'll contract with Majoran Gelati. And we are also asking for a $13,000 contingency reserve just for unforeseen site conditions, and that's roughly, when you add the two numbers together, about $140,000. Contractor indicates they believe, weather permitting, that you should be able to complete the project by the end of this year. So that concludes the staff report.
Okay, any questions of staff on this item? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up for public comment. So just a reminder, if you're speaking as an individual, you would have three minutes to comment. Oh, wait a minute, excuse.
Mayor, I do have one clarifying question.
Okay, sorry, ma'am.
Okay. Is there any additional shoring up, support of that road? And there's one section towards the bottom of it where it's particularly bad, and it's overhang, you know, lower scenic is there, and then ridge goes up this way.
I'm sorry, are you talking to the curb?
Just after the hairpin turn. Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm concerned that there's, needs to be support of that roadway.
So that's actually a separate project. That was a project that, right now, we have FEMA funding because of the last winter storm earlier part of this year. So that project's currently under design, and that would be bid separately. That project right now is eligible for FEMA funding, so ultimately, we'll get reimbursed about 93% for that project.
And that'll support that road better?
Right, so it's going to be basically retaining wall along the downside slope.
Yeah.
And I believe FEMA's letting us extend it further under mitigation funding.
Do we have an ETA on that, estimated time?
It's under design, but you can't, you're not going to be able to do it during the winter, because that would just, so spring would be the goal.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Do I need to-
No, it's already on.
Okay, I do have a question regarding that.
But you may want to move it down so it's closer to you.
Oh, I'm sure, okay, vertically challenged here. You were saying they're looking at doing that. My concern is on that stretch, we have a huge area of, we're down to dirt. So I am concerned about that being done in a timely fashion. But I'm more concerned about our stretch of, we are 446 scenic, we're 30, almost 34-year residents, my husband Lance and I, and I've been getting information out about this project, and it sounded great because it's been moving forward. Engineers were involved, Carl Bjarke came out, walked the road probably six to eight weeks ago. Since then, the plan has been written, and then it went to bed on Friday. And I just implore you to please fund this project. We, I'm going to briefly read just a little bit of a letter I got out to the neighborhood. Recently, Tamil Pious Road was paved. Starting today, Ridge Road will be paved from beginning to end. They had graded it and then put the, that grading material over on our adopted, Scenic Road Adoption Paving Project. Unfortunately, this letter is from October 21st, 2008, nothing's been done. A couple patch jobs. The road in front of our house goes like that, we have pooling water, so please, I implore you, I know it's an expensive, large amount of money, I knew we needed to get council to award the contract, but please do so because it's just in a mess, general state of mess, the straightaway and particularly the hairpin. I just, we have no road about a third of the way on that turn. So that's what we're here for. I've been getting letters out. This I came across in cleaning out our 30-year-plus garage, and it had a follow-up letter that at that time stated, the then Public Works Director, Kathy Wilkie, said it couldn't be done because it was in such poor repair. That was in 2008, nothing's been done except a patch here and a patch there, so please approve the funding. We look forward to having a road that's been repaired, rehabilitated, I love that word. Upper Scenic Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project, and I think that's very much what this road surface needs at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Stephanie?
Hi there, Stephanie Hellman, Redwood Road. I wanted to raise, and I will send this to the council, asphalt alternative that I wanted to make sure that has been explored or considered. And I saw this on Fast Company, so Los Angeles is testing a plastic asphalt that makes it possible to recycle roads by mixing recycled plastic bottles with chewed-up asphalt. The new process repaves a road without adding any new asphalt and makes it possible, and makes it from a new material that lasts longer. So I don't know if anyone is familiar with this, but I'd love it if we would explore this and consider it.
Okay, well that would be for something we'd consider in the future.
Yeah, obviously not for this project.
So why don't you, you send that to the deputy town clerk and then she sends it.
I will do that Hannah, it's on its way.
Okay, great, thank you Stephanie.
Great suggestion.
Could you just say what it's called, real quick?
I will say, I'm sorry, I need my glasses here. What is it called? Plastic asphalt, mixing recycled plastic bottles with chewed-up asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, I mean, I should mention that last month we did talk about the Flexipave-
That was the asphalt rubber.
Yeah, it's a rubber asphalt thing, but you know, it might be, newspapers are not necessarily all the way accurate, so it could be that we were talking about, we were exploring this last month, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to comment on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back. Would someone like to make a motion on this item? Remember that you're speaking from the supplement to Agenda Item 12.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution awarding the contractor, Majoran Gelati Inc., for the Scenic Road Repavement Project in an amount not to exceed $127,000 with a project contingency reserve of $13,000.
Okay, would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that measure passes, thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Okay, now, just to make sure everybody understands where we're at, because I'm confusing myself, is we are on just, Item 15, and that is Discuss/Consider Report on the Status of the Replacement Bus Shelter Located in the Parkade. John, you're not up yet, we're going to have our, our town manager do the initial staff report and then we'll have your presentation. No?
No, we, yes, okay, see, thanks. So, yes, a brief presentation by staff. So, would you like me to start?
Why don't you start and then we'll have John Ramadas do additional presentation.
Okay, so as you know, staff's been working with a volunteer, John Ramadas, to design the bus shelter, this is the bus shelter in the parkade.
Excuse me, folks who are speaking in the room, if you could speak outside, that'd be great, thank you.
So John prepared drawings and then we retained a licensed architect to put the drawings, put drawings into plans and also to sign off on the drawings, so we have a set. The architect's estimate was originally about $68,000 to $83,000 for a shelter. We got a rough estimate from a contractor about $65,000. Mr. Ramadas has a estimate from a contractor that's under 60,000, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Originally, the intent was, we thought Mr. Ramadas would like coordinate volunteer contractors to do the project, but we talked about it a lot more and determined that really, it's probably most effective and efficient really to have one contractor who's responsible for the project just going ahead and doing the project, that would probably be a much better way to proceed with the project. May be a role for volunteers in some aspect of it, we would have to figure that out later. But some things for the council to consider.
I think one aspect, though, just to interrupt you, is that we always intended that Mr. Ramadas would also participate in, even if we used a contractor, that he would be observing and helping us through the project at some point. So I don't want to speak, put words in your mouth, John, but I know we've talked.
Okay, so, yes, so some things for the council to keep in mind is that, you know, per our code, anything over $60,000 require actual going through the formal bidding process, so that's one threshold. The other thing is, one option is you can go back and revisit the volunteer-type concept, lots of coordination required there, and some other issues to think about. If we do do that, then obviously there's a timing constraint. Some of the other things, at least in terms of the cost, we could try to value-engineer the structure. We had actually talked about some things, don't know if that'd be a good thing, if you change the lattice or benchwork or somehow try to redo the footings so it's a little cheaper. But of course, under these options, then depending how long something is going to take, then maybe you might want to consider a temporary bus shelter. So if a contractor can't start work until January, well rainy season's coming, then we probably going to want to consider some type of temporary shelter, whatever that is. And then in the staff report, as an option, we put out that there are some pre-cut wooden structures out there. Probably at the end of the day, it's significantly cheaper, but it may not be something that you really want. I think in terms of staff's recommendation, ultimately, we'd rather just retain a contractor if we can for under $60,000, move forward with the project, then talk about a temporary shelter. But with that, I think what I'd like to do is let Mr. Ramadas share his thoughts on his design, and as well share his thoughts related to what's the next step in the project.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you, good evening, council, staff.
You can lift that up so you don't always having to bend over.
So I just want to kind of go, that was really good summary of everything that I know about so far. So, a little bit of a quick evolution of how we got here, just for everybody who's here. The, this new, this is a shelter, there's a picture on the screen of an old historic train station shelter that was along Center Avenue. And seeing as how we need a new shelter, originally, the intent was to have volunteers get together and it was, I thought it would be a good idea to have volunteers build something like this. And then I started to put the pieces together and start designing it, and it just got more complicated, and so that's how we got there. But what's going on here is, there's, I, this, oh, sorry, so, this design is, was taken, actually this actual bus, or, excuse me, train shelter is grafted onto somebody's house in Fairfax. Mrs., I believe her name, Marlene Rago, I believe is her name?
It's, people know Michael Rosenthal as well, yeah.
Oh, Michael Ros, I don't know if they're, that must be her husband. But they have this grafted on, she was kind enough to let Jane and I go through and take measurements, and, so we can get a scale, and not really reproduce this, but, you know, go with the same look and have it up to the, you know, the ADA codes and the current building codes. And it's a little different, you can, it's going to be situated, or if it's approved for construction, it'll be situated, and you can actually walk through it. So you'll, if you're standing on Sir Francis Drake and you're looking back towards Bolinas, you'll be able to look through it. And that's about it, I think, I don't know if there's too much else about it, but I would like to be involved if a contractor, you know, contractor takes on the work. And I guess I'm just kind of putting it out there, you guys, you know, if you guys like this design and if you would like this in your town, our town.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to Jane Richardson-Mack and John Ramadas for spending so much time on this and trying to design something that would be really a feature for the town. We appreciate that. And my thoughts are that just, you know, people are waiting for the bus, and a lot of us don't always ride the bus, but people are out in the elements. So I, I did like the fact that you were able to find a contractor who submitted a bid that would be within reason. What we were talking about before was upwards of $100,000, and, and so I think that's a good thing. But I would just open it up to council who have questions for John, or even for Garrett, but I think John's kind of the expert in a lot of this. And I want to also recognize Mark Lockaby, who worked with our architect to get this done, and has been very involved in looking at ADA accessibility as well as the whole thing overall, so I appreciate Mark being there. I know he's here for other reasons as well. So any questions for John or Garrett?
I'd just like to add, just like to add, that architect is Richard Dowd, and he's a local architect, he was very helpful through the process.
Thank you. Peter, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you Mayor, thank you John. I have a question, there's, at the end of the report, there's a-
And by the way, there's supplements, just saying.
Yeah, and I'm looking at that, there's a photograph, I can't tell if that's, it looks like, is that a, it's a pretty poor quality, I can't tell if that's a photograph of the old bus, it looks like it's the-
Yeah, with the Fairfax sign across the face?
Yeah, or is that a kind of a simulation of what the new design would look like?
Let me, uh-
It's, let me find it, it's this piece of paper here.
Is it this one on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a picture of the old bus shelter-
Okay, that's what I thought.
That, I forget his name, I think it's Brian Saghar from the Historical Society, he had kind of photoshopped in some windows, so that's not a true representation of what the old shelter looked like. But that shelter apparently is, from what I've heard, was taken from, or not, or given from Tiburon, was given to the town and put up, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's kind of, it's different than the newer design, it's a little bit different.
So it's kind of a Photoshop of-
Of what it was.
What it was way back in the day.
Yes, that's now gone, yeah.
And sort of that's the look that you would be looking to achieve with the new design too?
No, not necess, no, not this, this is, Jane-
Maybe Jane can, Jane can hold it up, the Vanna White thing, but it's hard to see.
It's hard to see there, but-
Yeah, because, so-
So that, to answer your question, no.
Can you bring that a little closer?
You have actually copies of that in your packet, Peter.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay, thanks for clarifying that, this photograph was confusing. I'm wondering, John, if, you know, Garrett had talked about possibly obtaining kind of a pre-cut wooden structure, and there's a photograph of one. And I'm wondering, you know, just in terms of expense and so forth, if it might be possible to take like a wooden structure like this and then add these visual elements which are really, really very attractive, and I wonder if that might work, rather than, you know, redesigning and engineering something from scratch, is that something that you could consider, or that we could consider as a way to do this?
Anything's possible and I, you could consider that. The, I, you know, this, this design is specific to-
Sarah, could you maybe leave that so other folks can look at it as well?
A historical context, it's taken all the cues, all the, like the heavy timber, the whole feel of it is just taken from the old train shelter, and that's kind of like, I mean, I like the design, so that's, that's a different design, you know, that you just provided. So I mean, it's possible, but it's, it's just different, it's one or the other. I prefer this because I like, you know, I like old, you know, it's historic, you know, it has cues from Fairfax history, and that's kind of a little bit more, does it for me a little bit more than a newer structure like that.
Would you be able to add those kind of visual cues to a sort of a pre-constructed structure? Because the, the one in the, that's attached to the staff report, it does look, I don't know if the right word is sort of modern rustic, but-
Oh, I think it was the one more up, yeah.
The very bottom.
Keep going.
Yeah, I mean-
It looks like, I mean, it looks like possibly an open shell that could be-
Right.
You know, added with the visual features added, just want to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so something like this, it, you know, I guess you could call, it's a style, a barnyard style, so to speak, and I think if you start adding other elements, it, it doesn't look right, you know, it's kind of, I think there's a term called false historicism, it's when you try and make something look old, but it's not, there's, you know, the scale isn't there, the lumber's different sizes, and it, to me, it always looks, when I see those things, it looks like a mixed match of, you know, these architectural elements that don't really belong together. I mean, you know, I guess if you're creative enough and you took enough time and really thought it out, you could make something like that work, but it would, that's a whole different thing, I wouldn't necessarily try to make that look like the old train shelter.
I think you're also talking about, I think your key phrase was something about if you take enough time. So there's been a lot of time and effort placed on getting us to this point with the design that John worked on, and the figures in the report talk about 22,000 for this cut thing. But if you start adding more features and, and also doing the concrete pouring, the price is going to go up, and the time is going to get more delayed, so there's, there's something to be thought about that, so I'm glad that you voiced your opinion on, you know, your preference is something that looks more historical.
Yes, and, I mean, to the extent that I don't really know what's involved in putting that together, I mean, if it's like a cookie cutter thing you buy on the internet or whatever, and then, you know, you get it out there and who knows the requirements for the foundation, or if there are any, I mean, I think there's a lot of unknowns for me to really make a-
So the plans that we have in front of us, it looks like there's some kind of stamps on them and so forth, have they, they've been vetted engineering-wise and all that?
Right, so Richard Dowd, the architect, he took my design drawings and formatted them in an electronic format and stamped and signed them, so that's what was required because it's a public, a public building technically, I believe. Which requires an architect's stamp, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Can I, so John, is it, you're talking about 60,000, and that includes the, the concrete and the footings and all of-
Yeah, just under 60,000 for all said and done.
For all said and done.
That would include the, the ramp for loading as well?
Yeah, so, I take that back, it's not all said, that excludes, I believe, paint, excludes, and some electrical that has yet to be determined. So, but for the structure, the concrete and everything, that's what the quote was, it was about 58.
And that's the labor, that's every, that's-
That's everything, yeah. 58 and change, I believe. Fifty-eight and change, I believe.
And is there, in the design, are there any benches?
There is, they, so, when I was designing it, it was conceptual in my head about how it was gonna go together, and I was actually going to try and build some of it, but, you know, again, time is, you know, I don't have too much, you know, not, there's only so many hours in the day. But I have talked with the, there, there's like a side view of them, but they're not shown fully fleshed out.
And how many, your design, how many seats would that provide for people waiting?
Um, I believe, it, it's a bench, so I think if you assume thirty inches per person, and then with a wheelchair space, I don't know, it could probably fit maybe eight, nine people in there, maybe?
What's the, yeah, the depth, I guess?
It's about twelve foot, it's like twelve foot long, so, I can't do the math, thirty-
Is each bench-
One forty-four, divided by thirty.
Yeah, four, four on each side.
Yeah, about four on each side.
Is each bench twelve feet long?
About like the bus stop that we recently had up there, it's about the same size.
Yeah, so it's approximately, yeah.
So, it's about twenty-four linear feet of bench space?
Yeah, I would say seven people and a wheelchair space.
Okay.
Okay, so, Peter, did you have any more questions?
Yeah, just wondering, too, about, you know, will it provide adequate shelter for the elements, 'cause, you know, windy, rainy, blustery day?
Good question. So, this design, so the, the original shelter, as far as I could tell, had an open, you know, space behind the benches, it was just open, with the exception of some lattice work. In subsequent iterations, it looked like windows had been installed, multiple pane windows. So, that is a consideration.
Well, let's look, go back to the, the, sort of, anticipated design.
This is not the anticipated design.
There isn't a picture of the anticipated design, you have to look at, looks similar to this.
So, just to clarify, that's the original structure. The drawings that you have by Richard Dowd show the design intent that we're going for, and the one with the windows is the, the old shelter. It's what the old shelter was, so that's gone. And, yeah, the, what you're seeing is most like what we're going, what we're going for design-wise.
And just to be clear, I think there was issues with crime if you completely enclosed it.
Yeah.
So, we wanted to stay away from a complete enclosure, because there was some criminal activity going on in that bus shelter.
Yeah, that was another thought, we kept, the back of the bench was kept as low as possible, and that's why we have the thoroughfare, because I believe there was a concern by the police about, you know, people, you know, in there, and there was some problems maybe with-
Well, if someone's sitting on the, the bench, is there any kind of wall behind them to keep the elements out? 'Cause, otherwise, it doesn't seem to make sense to have a bench where you're just getting rain and wind.
Well, there's two feet of overhang beyond the back of the bench, of, the roof hangs past the back of the bench, two feet. So, a driven rain, yeah, you might not be protected so well. That's a, that's, yeah, I mean, that's something to be looked at. I guess, you know, I mean, you could add windows, maybe, that's another cost.
Which would quickly be broken.
Yeah, I mean-
And would cause glass problems. So, I think one of the things we wanna get away from is, you know, a few of us have sat on the planning commission, and I get the sense like we're kind of grilling you like you were an applicant, and I don't, I don't, I, this isn't the planning commission, so I think-
No, no, it's not, but I, you know, a bus shelter, you know, function first, form follows function, and, you know, we, we wanna provide something that provides shelter for people waiting for the bus, and, you know, three, four months out of the year, it's, you know, many of those days-
That's a valid, valid concern, yeah.
So, I, I, I'm not-
May I say that we, you know, if something like that turns out to be an issue, maybe you could, you know, on the top of the bench, put a little strip of glass that comes up, you know, or, you know, something, wouldn't have to be a full fleshed-out window, but maybe, or some sort of wind barrier, a windscreen along the top of the bench could be added?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, you know, before voting on funding a specific plan, I, I, the details of the drawings, too, aren't real clear to me, that those concerns as it, serving as an adequate enough shelter are, are met. I mean, aesthetically, it's, it's a lovely design, and it does, you know, I think you have captured the, the look and feel of the, the original, but, you know, I, I think in, in weighing, you know, we're trying to make a decision, well, what would most people waiting for the bus want to be adequate versus the, the look?
You know, I've, I've looked at many bus shelters across the county since this started, and, most of them are more open. There are days where there's driving, wind, and rain, they're, they're not all the time. When it's raining, it's typically just raining. So, let's move on, so that, I know there are folks in the audience who wanna speak on this as well. John, did you have a question, or Bruce, or, okay, Renee, go ahead.
So, that, that's one side of it, I love it, I'm really appreciative of the work you've done, I think it captures it. But if this were going to happen, just given the time, and we needed a temporary, I'd be curious to know, if we're gonna vote for this to move forward and get it in line, what would we do? What are we talking about for temporary? And how do we keep the costs down and make it functional?
Probably what we would do, like, tonight, you're not really taking action, per se, given direction, and then we'd come back to you in December with approval, and then at that time, if you were talking temporary, we'd probably give you some ideas of what we would put in.
I think one of the things I'd like to see, because it is gonna start raining, and December is short, very quickly approaching, is, let's really plan for the temporary bus shelter, because the contractor that John so graciously got to submit a bid can't do work until January anyway, so we are gonna have to move forward with something. And so, that would be at the December, what is it, third or fourth meeting, something like that. Okay, John?
Yeah, good, thanks. Yeah, I think this design is great, too, you know, I mean, it, it looks cool. There is a reason why they added windows later, I mean, that's, you know, part of the function of it is to keep people out of inclement weather during the thing, and, you know, they make tempered glass now, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily gonna get smashed, you know? And there's a way, you know, that we could probably address that, and maybe it's a retrofit thing there, maybe it's something that Rich already has an idea about, you know, so that's probably worth asking.
Yeah.
So, that's my thought on that. I mean, the, the pitch of the roof, I mean, it's, it's, it's cool, nice to have this very little pitch to that roof, except there's a reason why they have roofs with higher pitches like this, you know, and, and that it does shed water a lot faster. I mean, it's great for a sun, you know, but when you get any real amount of rain piling up, you know, you gotta do a different roofing system and stuff. But, but that said, you know, it's a bus shelter, and we could probably, you know, there's, you're not really gonna be, I mean, that was one of the deficiencies of the old structure there, is it had those really cool old thick shingles.
Right, right.
But, you know, it had termites all through it, so, you know, but there's pretty good roofing systems now, you know, that are metal, that could be out of, you know, I mean, I, I can't tell from this exactly how, how you would, whether you'd see that top surface or not.
Yeah, I think-
But it may well be with a low pitch like that, you, you'd never see it, and so, you know, it, it could be, we could have an affordable solution there.
I think, what, so originally, we were gonna do like a three-tab shingle type of system, but the roof pitch is too low, so we're gonna do a, a torch down, I believe we talked about, I had discussions.
Yeah, that works.
And that's the way to go with that. Just, and because of the slope, I think with shingles, you need one and twelve, or, I forget what it is.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but my thought is, yeah, I mean, let's, let's go with the character of that, and in terms of a temporary structure, I mean, a pop-up with, would even work, you know, just, we've got, the town owns them, you know, we could just-
You mean it easy, huh?
I mean, it's, it's cheap, and it's quick, and the wind can blow it away, yeah, but you can also tie it down with sandbags. And basically, we're talking something, you know, for a month or two, until we can get rolling on this.
Okay, well, that's a good suggestion.
And I think that's a make-it-work solution.
Bruce, did you have a question?
First of all, I'll say I really like the design, and I do see with the, with the temporary, or, I mean, with the sort of prefab thing, appreciate the idea of possibly saving some money, but I'm not sure it would save as much as we think, because the insulation isn't included, and the concrete, it, that particular thing would not fit with the concrete, and I really appreciate that you've designed this so that we wouldn't have to re-pour the pad.
That's, sorry, that's incorrect.
That's a good, oh, really?
Yeah.
I thought that it was designed so that you would drill into the four corners of the existing pad.
That was the original of how I designed it in my drawings, but when it came to an engineer reviewing it, or what have you, that was, they redesigned a new pad.
Okay, all right. But, in any case, the, I, for aesthetic reasons, I prefer this, and, and I think it's a good way to go. I also noted that this prefab thing says that it's made from Douglas fir, which isn't as robust as the cedar or redwood. I do have a number of, of things, and I don't know whether this would be-
Excuse me, Garrett and Janet, you guys, we can hear you, so, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
I don't know whether it makes sense to go into detail about some of these things, and I'd love to talk with you about them. Not really clear on how much detail we want tonight, but the, one of the things definitely was the pitch of the roof. I think it's, it's a pretty low pitch to use composition shingles on, and I would definitely suggest, and I'd be willing to work with you on this, because I've done them, a, a metal roof. I think a metal roof would, would probably look really good on it, and there is a type of metal roof that could handle this kind of slope.
Like a standing seam?
Standing seam, yeah, yeah, that's a, there's a version of a standing seam that actually has sealant in the standing seam, so it works well for very low slope. So, there are a few other things, little details, just, I'll mention, one of them that, on the roof, there's, the way the drawing shows, there's, going from the inside up to the top, there's, there's tongue and groove, and then there's plywood, and then I presume there would be an underlayment, and then the roof.
Yes, that's correct.
The, that first layer, the tongue and groove was specified as one and a quarter inch, and I, I was wondering whether that could be three-quarters inch, that would be quite a bit less expensive.
That was a thought, that was one of the cost-saving, value-engineering thoughts.
Three, three-quarter, I mean, it's not gonna make a visual difference at all.
And, and so, you know, if contractor, Peterson Construction, he was willing to work with anything, like, reduce the costs, he was more than willing to, to go down that road.
Okay, so, yeah, those are the primary things that I wanted to bring up, of any relevance to this discussion, and I, I would like to see us go forward, but we need to get some public input first and continue this discussion, so.
Okay, well, John, for now, you can sit down, but don't leave. Oh, you have one more comment?
I just wanna add one thing, so, this is, it's built to last, the way it's designed, I mean, it's not gonna tip over, I mean, it's, you know, you could go there in an earthquake, you'd be fine, I mean, it's, the design is really strong.
I imagine if a tree fell on it, it would still be standing, it's very solidly designed.
So, it's for the long term.
Thank you, John, so don't leave. So, I'd like to ask if there's any public comment on this item?
Absolutely. This is gonna be in the center of our town. We would short-change ourself if we tried to save a dollar here, I think it'd be penny wise and pound foolish. This is a very nice architectural component to our town, it represents our town, it shows continuity, it's in the center of our town, it represents our local materials, as opposed to the thing at the end. And as for the shelter, since there's comments about, like, yes, once in a while, we're gonna have rain, rain's not gonna kill us. But, in nineteen ninety-eight, I took my family on a tour over the Sierras and up to Canada the next year, in a nineteen-thirty Packard, so it's a big, long, open Phantom with two windshields. That car never had windows and a door. In case there was rain, it had these little curtains that roll down. We could put curtains on the side, and put them up every year, and lower them down if we're really that concerned about a little rain. It's safe, it's inexpensive, you can replace it every year. And last comment, for the roof, the metal roof is probably a good idea, 'cause if we have these concerns about fire, we probably don't want shingles on a flat surface, or even a torch down if we don't need it, a metal roof could accommodate that. But I strongly suggest, council, if you're gonna spend a dollar, that you spend your dollar wisely, that you'll wanna look at and enjoy seeing every single time. And there's ways to maybe keep the price down a little bit, 'cause there's some resources that might be able to come to the table that won't cost the town any money.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker, please.
Spiritually, I'm with everybody in town, let's have something beautiful, centerpiece, beautiful design, all of that, but as a person who grew up in an urban environment, took subways and buses for a long stretch of my life, and lived in San Francisco for thirteen years with no car, I can tell you that the number one thing people that really take buses care about is being protected from the elements, and, and some comments have been made, I, I, too, was thinking about interesting things, something you could hang or whatever it is, but the truth of the matter is, it's gonna make me super unpopular with just about everybody, but, for the safety thing of being able to see through, plastic is the best situation. I know everyone hates plastic in this town, nobody wants a prefab, but from the standpoint of standing there, and to minimize whipping rain, I've, I've been in bush, I've been in snow, sleet, ice, rain, crazy side-windy rain stuff, and we get some serious storms here, and for the people who actually really take buses and don't have any other option, they can't be on a bicycle, and they don't have a car, and they're not getting a ride, you get soaked, and it's really uncomfortable, and the seats get wet, and the whole experience in there is just miserable and nasty, and I think the number one thing that should be considered is the actual people who are using the bus station in a practical way. So, you know, you wanna hang some weird sheets of plastic where you can kinda see through for safety, and maybe it does some kind of protection. I'm open to any kind of innovative thing, I would love something lovely, and wooden, and organic materials, and hearken to the old Fairfax that looks lovely, or whatever it is, but from the standpoint of the people who are gonna actually use it, something with big, open space like that, you're gonna get demolished in the rain, and, and when it's really hot, and different things, so, I just think you really, really gotta balance, and should get some input from the people who are actually gonna use it and actually stand out there. Buses don't come every five minutes in this town, we're out here and we're in transits, people wait sometimes forty minutes or an hour for a bus, spend a lot of time in there, and people are elderly, and they've got packages, and they've got bags, and laptops, and different things that they're doing, and they need to be able to sit down, and they wanna be protected, and that's the number one thing, is the utilitarian function of a bus station, so, that's, that's my thought.
Thank you, Richard. Next speaker, please.
I just wanted to say thank you to Peter, I thought your comments were really helpful, and I really think they started the conversation going in a, in a direction that really helps us think about things better. I didn't really see that happening before, and now we're to the point of actual functionality. My neighbor, Marta, is blind, and she has used that, well, she used to use the, the bus shelter down there, and talked about danger, and talked about being confronted by people, and she also talked about getting soaked, and it's really, really important. I think what Michael said, what Richard said, it really does have to do with the people that don't own vehicles, and will be doing that. And an added side feature that's so great about a metal roof, it'll protect us from five G satellites.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I don't know, on my way here, I walked past the children's playground on Park, and they're trying to privately raise twenty-five thousand dollars for the kids' playground, and I think they're at ten thousand, I don't know how many months that thing has been up, but we have, like, no problem thinking about sixty-five thousand dollars.
We've already allocated eighty thousand towards Perry Park. We've allocated eighty thousand towards Perry Park.
And so, why do they have to raise another twenty-five thousand?
Because it's part of the process, and they're not ready to, to redo the park yet.
Okay, well, I stand corrected. But in any event, I'm looking at sixty-five thousand dollars, people build houses for sixty-five thousand dollars. Sierra had mentioned, when they were doing the work on the Park Aid, that if we could get them to do the footings, maybe in the long run, it would be cheaper, but that obviously hasn't happened. I agree with Richard, if you're, people who take the bus have a much different viewpoint on things than those of us who are just looking at it or- than those of us who are just looking at it or walking by it or driving by it. And they should definitely have a chance to put some input into this. You can also get some pretty strong plastics that are impact, pretty impact-proof as far as people throwing rocks or bricks at them and they don't break. So I think having more protection is something that should definitely be considered. But again, I'm thinking $65,000 for a bus shelter? I don't know. I don't do construction. When I was younger, I was good at destructing things. So I don't really have a good idea of what things would cost. But $65,000 for a bus structure seems pretty high to me.
Thank you, Mark. Next speaker.
Hi, Mallory Godham, Willow Avenue. I love this. And I think I want to go on board with what Michael said. I'm not crazy about the plastic sheet. But if we could either put some strong plexiglass or tempered glass on sliders to keep it open in the summer. In terms of how much things cost, Mark, I build fences that, I mean, wood is really expensive. Labor is really expensive, so I can understand why this is $65,000. And it's beautiful, and it really feels like Fairfax. And if we can figure out the, I think we have to keep it open and clear. So if there, I'd rather see some really strong plastic or tempered glass and the ability to slide it open. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item? Sierra?
I got to say, I'm pretty disappointed with the lack of footings or the slab that's there. There are lots of us that could have built and poured some footings without engineering and had it be plenty strong and pretty much overkill. It's not rocket science. Anyway, that being said, I think we need to put it off till spring or move the bus stop that's being used now if somebody's going to build it in the winter because people are going to be out there standing in the rain. And if we're going to be building something around the rain, we need to think about moving it because we're not going to be building it there while it's raining. I mean, maybe it's never going to rain again. Things don't look, as it is now, it's like, I don't know if the slab is salvageable, but somebody needs to cut up the slab for at least like the corners to pour some footings. I think it's possible to hire Gilati or somebody that's got the concrete saws that'll cut a foot deep to pour the footings and put some hangers in there. And maybe have volunteers build it, which is possible, which would cut costs down, but it'll take time. I think there's plenty of people willing to do it and able, including myself. And I think it would also build community and put some connections in it. It's also Fairfax. We could also pile up a bunch of used cars or old bicycles and build like a little structure all the way around and maybe top it with ground-up plastic that we can hold together with string. And we can also have a special like phone tree that we can talk across the town with special parabolic. I'm sorry. I think there was kind of an expectation, an agreement with people before the old one was torn down, that we would build something similar in style and feel to it. So I think that we should stick to that, whether it's volunteer, whether it's built by somebody. You know, that's all fine. But I think we need to protect the people that are standing there for the bus. In terms of plexiglass, it's possible to have some panels that just go up in the winter and get taken down in the spring. Plexi's probably a better idea than tempered. And Mallory's idea, something that slides or moves, I don't see that in a public bus stop. And somebody talked about cedar or something durable. Fur is much more durable than redwood or cedar or anything. And people are probably going to be carving on it and doing other stuff. So use a hardwood like fur. The less moving parts, the better. It's easy to have some stuff that goes in and out with the seasons. And whatever, let's do it, make it good, you know? And there's volunteers that would love to do it, or we could have somebody else do it. It's like just don't have the people standing on the rain all winter. And let's do a rain dance.
Thank you. So did anyone else want to speak on this topic? See, now I'm bringing it back. I just want to say one thing. I've been an advocate for a bus shelter, and that's why there's a bus shelter on the Broadway side, because there wasn't one there. And most of us do not ride the bus. Sierra and Mallory, can you guys take that outside? So, you know, I've been an advocate for a bus shelter. And I think we do need to move forward. And I think there were some ideas thrown out here today from members of the community as well as John, Bruce, Peter. And I think we can make some tweaks to this. And I also think if we can start in January to build this, if there's a need to move a temporary bus shelter, just like we did when the parcade was being built, we can do that. And I think it's time to get that done. And let's move forward. So that's my push. And I think some of the things I heard tonight, I just want to kind of sum it up before I open it up for council deliberations, is we talked about a metal roof. I think Bruce mentioned something like a three-quarter inch something that sounded good. There is some discussion of something to protect folks from the elements. And I think we can look into that. And I just want to say thank you to John for, who has spent so much time. He's been steadfast, as has Jane, in trying to put this forward. Jane, who I've known for a number of years, who's one of our most creative people in town. Thank you for spending so much time and effort on this. And I think we can make some potential changes and move forward on it. And let's get that bus shelter in there. So before we, so my feeling is, we heard some stuff tonight that we can make some changes and bring that back in December to kind of, with the temporary bus shelter idea. And then, you know, go full speed ahead. And, you know, yeah, in the old days, we could build a house for $65,000 or $60,000. Unfortunately, you can't very easily, maybe in some of the places I've lived in the country, you still can. But we've done a lot at the parcade. This would be kind of the icing on the cake. And it would protect people during the rain and elements and the sun. So let's do it. But let's do some quick wrap-ups and move forward and let John sit down and stop grilling him, but don't leave yet.
Thank you, council, for everything.
Mayor, I have some questions for John, actually.
Okay, let's make it quick because it's moving on 20 to 10.
It's not grilling, but, so there was a suggestion of, by Michael, of something that perhaps could roll down. Ideally, it would be good if it was some kind of translucent plastic. I kind of like that idea. I mean, it's in the wintertime, it's not going to look as nice. But I think it is important to be able to provide that shelter from the wind, as Richard talked about. Is that, how feasible is that? Just given the breadth and the width and the height that something that size would have to be to roll down? I mean, I'm looking at about a 12 by 12-foot piece of material.
We're talking about like a heavy, geez, I don't know, like a heavy mesh type thing because you still would want to see through.
Okay, so people do not shout from the back of the room.
So I get where you're coming from.
I'm envisioning something like translucent that rolls down. And yeah, I've seen them, but like...
Like the freezer things that come down, yeah.
Is that, what do you think of that?
I don't have any experience with that sort of thing. But I can, I don't mind looking into all these options. I have that, a curtain, plexiglass. And I do like the idea of seasonally just having panels that can just go in and then they go out. That's, yeah, that's kind of a cost-effective thing. We can look at a few of these.
Yeah, because aesthetically, it is very lovely. But it'd be great, and I'm glad to have the input about concern about, you know, providing shelter during those months. One other thought Renee made in a side comment to me is if we could have the drainage off the roof feed into, there's a plant or a tree next to that, very minor detail, but that would be good to capture that water and feed it into the ground there. I would really like to see just that additional element be thought about to provide some kind of, you know, removable shelter feature in the winter.
Okay, I think we got that.
For sure.
Jane had a quick comment.
As we're talking about this, I couldn't help but have an idea. And that would be perhaps oversized lattice panels with the plastic in them. So it wouldn't just be a big ugly piece of refrigerator plastic. It would continue the idea of the lattice design. And they could probably be like two panels that would, two six-foot panels that would fit in the 12-foot space, installed seasonally perhaps. And they wouldn't be, it wouldn't make it dark and enclosed. So there could be illegal activities going on inside. There still could be light, but it wouldn't just be a big ugly piece of plastic. I'm sure that a creative solution can be found to protect the public from the elements when it's really wild. And thank you all for that.
I like that additional idea, yeah.
Okay, and then we heard metal roof. And then Bruce, what was it you said, the three-quarter inch?
That was just a detail. The tongue and groove underneath the plywood on the roof could be three-quarter inch rather than inch and a quarter.
And while John...
If the engineer agrees with that.
And while John is doing this as a volunteer, I think a lot of this direction is for staff. Garrett? Okay, and Mark? Did you have something else to add?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I think a rolling down plastic thing is, we're talking, in the middle of a storm, we're talking 40, 50 knot winds potentially or even more. And that's a lot of force. And, you know, I think we have to have something strong enough. But I really like the, you know, panels we install in the wintertime. You know, maybe it's a couple of them. You know, maybe we can add some details to them so they mix in with the lattice look on the rest so it doesn't look like we slammed something inappropriate on there. But I mean, aesthetically pleasing is a great idea. You know, I mean, I got to say, going from inch and a quarter to three-quarter on the tongue and groove, you know, if you're expecting this to last a really long time, you may be sorry you did that because it's hard to get to that tongue and groove. You know, I mean, maybe, I mean, talk to the contractor. But, you know, it might be penny wise and pound foolish in the long run because, you know, you get teenagers with carbon initials and stuff like that.
So why don't we, we'll look into that, the pros and cons.
Yeah. And, yeah, this is great. Let's go ahead. And the most important thing, I think, is that the temporary shelter for the people who are going to be taking the bus during the time that this is happening, if it is in fact starting in January, needs to be adjacent to this because you need a work area and you need a bus stop at the same time.
I think you should direct that to staff.
For, yes.
I think we'll come back to you with a game plan of how that would work because obviously you can't have the shelter where they're doing the work.
Right, right. So, you know, I mean, it'll, yeah, adjacent, yeah. And it could be a pop.
All right, so Renee?
I love this, thank you. I like the metal roof, the water catchment if possible because we're going to have enough issues with drainage. And I wondered if we could look into any way of using reclaimed wood.
Yes.
Just let's keep that in our minds.
That's, that's...
Because we're talking about hardwoods.
High on the list of priorities, yeah.
Okay, well, let's wrap this up. Thank you, John and Jane. And thank you, Mark Lockaby, Garrett Toy, all for working on this. And so we're going to have this at the December meeting for final decision-making and moving forward. And so I would say, Garrett, just, I won't be mayor after that, but I'll be setting that agenda with you. So let's do that early in the meeting so we can, I think John has to get up early for work. So let's get it done. Thank you, guys. Okay, now, to get us back on track on our agenda, we're now doing item 13, how about we, are we doing item 13 first or item 14? Oh, item 13. Okay, this is the item for introduce and read by title only in ordinance of the town council, amending chapter 15.04 of the Fairfax Municipal Code and adopting by reference of 2019 California Building Standards Title 24, et cetera, et cetera. And I think we lost Garrett Toy, but he'll be back in a moment. Mark, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So would you like to do the staff report?
Yes.
Thank you.
So every three years, the state of California adopts new building codes. And we're at that three-year cycle now. And so what's before you are the new 2019 California Building Codes. That includes the California Administrative Code, the California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Electrical Code, the California Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Energy Code, Historic Building Code, Fire Code, Existing Building Code, Reference Standards, and the Green Building Standards Code, Cal Green.
We're doing the Fire Code separately, correct?
Correct.
That's our next item.
The state has mandated that local jurisdictions must adopt the codes with appendices and amendments to be effective by January 1st, 2020. California Building Standards are applicable to all occupancies throughout California whether or not local government takes affirmative action to adopt these California Building Standards. However, the standards enforced by statute will be without added appendices and amendments. Staff recommends that the town continue to adopt the California Green Building Standards Code to include Tier 1 mandatory measures for commercial and residential construction with verification provided by the installer or designer, excluding Tier 1 energy efficiency provisions contained in Appendix A 4.2 and A 4.5.2. And there was some discussion between myself and the mayor about why don't we adopt those? And the reason being is that the Energy Commission requires that we do studies, and we have to present those studies showing that there's a cost basis, that it's not going to be too expensive. And then they have to approve that. And over the last code cycles, there's only been about, I think there's 19 cities and counties that have actually gone through that process. And they're all like San Francisco, Marin, and L.A. and those areas, so.
But I think you mentioned that those are stricter building codes for energy efficiency than what's already in the code. And that the code that we're adopting includes energy efficiency standards that are required generally, correct?
Yeah, the Energy Code on its own is pretty strict. And when that comes into play, if someone does a furnace upgrade in their house, then the Energy Code comes into play. It requires that they have to put in a certain efficiency furnace. They have to have their ducts tested to make sure that those are efficient and work properly. So that's all tested. If you put in windows, they have to meet the Energy Code requirements. So it comes into play in retrofit. And it also comes into play more, much more substantially on a major remodel or a new home where there's lighting requirements inside and outside, insulation requirements, the number of windows that you can have in the house, the type of material that the windows are made out of. So it's very extensive.
Okay, well, that helped me understand it. Thank you. Keep going.
And then I'm recommending that we adopt the 2018 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code. It is not included in the California Code of Regulations, but it is included in the ordinance because it is referenced for use in the California Building Code. And then the Fire Code will be adopted separately. And I can answer questions if you have questions about it. We have very, when I started working here 16 years ago, there were very few amendments. And I've kind of kept it that way in the building code. I haven't added in a lot of extra amendments into it.
Okay, well, thank you. Are there any questions for Mark Lockaby from the council? Renee?
Is the Cal Green standard, and I know you guys were talking about different tiers, is that the highest standard?
They have different tiers. They have different tiers, Tier One and Two. And Tier Two would be a higher standard.
Okay. And the only other question I had is, there, I think it may have even been a couple of years ago, started talking about requirements when there are more than 50% remodels for gray water piping. Is, where, where does that stand? And is there anything addressed in the codes around gray water?
I believe there is, but I'm not really on, on top of the gray water and what's happening with that.
So it hasn't surfaced to the top of the code, code talk? Okay.
Bruce, did you have a question? Oh, no, I mean, I'm not forcing you to, you were looking at me, so.
But on something like the gray water, as I understand it, just to confirm, when we in Fairfax say that we want to, we wanna have an ordinance that, that, that gray water systems, if possible, should be put in, that's not included in the code. The code is just saying if we do do a gray water system, this is how it would be done.
It is, it is in the code. And to, to go back, MMWD does require in new structures that, that they, they have gray water systems in place. And the systems are contained in the code and how to do them. But the requirement is through MMWD.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, would anybody like to speak on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the council. Would somebody like to make a motion? Nobody speak up? Let's.
Sure.
Let's move forward. So you wanna read the, are they reading the subject or the recommendation?
Okay.
What are they reading? Okay, go ahead, Bruce. Thank you.
All right, well, I'm looking for it here. Okay, there you go. So this is fairly long. I move that we introduce and read by title only an ordinance titled, An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending chapter 15.04 of the Town of Fairfax Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2019 California Building Standards Code, California Code of Regulations Title 24, Parts 1, 2, 2.5, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 12, which consists of the California Administrative Building, Residential, Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Energy, Historical Building, Existing Building, Green Building Standards, and Reference Standards Codes. And adopting the 2018 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, together with certain additions, insertions, deletions, and changes thereto.
Would somebody like to second that? Okay. Second read, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on. And I appreciate our fire folks sitting here very patiently. Okay, so we're moving on to item 14. This is introduce and read by title only an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending chapters 8.04 and 8.06 of the Town of Fairfax Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2019 California Fire Code, portions of the 2018 International Wildland Urban Interface Code with certain additions, insertions, deletions, changes thereto, sequel exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines, et cetera, and Public Resources Code Section, et cetera. And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, you are being filmed.
Certainly.
And for folks in the audience who maybe don't know you personally.
So I'm Battalion Chief Scott Alber. I'm the Fire Marshal for Ross Valley and Marin County Fire. And we're here, as you mentioned, to read by title only the adoption of the International Fire Code, California Fire Code, portions of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. As your building official mentioned, every three years, the state by law has to adopt the latest version of the model code. They make, all the state agencies that have a dog in the fight, if you will, in the codes, makes amendments to the model codes. And we have 180 days after the state makes those amendments to amend, insert our amendments to those codes. So that is what we've done. Over the last, I've been Fire Marshal not long enough to have participated in four of these amendments cycles, code cycles. And the fire service here in Marin County has done an excellent job in making their respective amendments consistent across the board. To that end, all fire, you know, fire permission staff throughout the county has met over the months previous to now to, to make those amendments consist, as consistent as possible. That certainly helps, you know, contractors and homeowners, you know, as they're going from jurisdiction to jurisdiction that have the same requirements. So having said that, we, our recommendation as staff is to introduce and read by title only an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending chapters 8.04 and 8.06 of the Town of Fairfax Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2019 California Fire Code, portions of the 2018 International Wildland Urban Interface Code with certain additions, insertions, deletions, and changes thereto.
Hey, and Robert, do you wanna introduce yourself, just for folks in the audience?
Yeah, Rob Bashman, Senior Fire Inspector with the Ross Valley Fire Department.
Great, thank you both for being here and being so patient. Any questions for our fire guys from the council?
Sure. One question. The proposed changes are some bullet points. And it said, add a section to specify that fire alarm systems shall be monitored by a listed central station. I was just, was wondering what that involves as a practical matter.
So a listed central station is an entity that, so when a fire alarm occurs, building equipped with a fire alarm system, it's either a local alarm or it's monitored by a alarm company. And a central, and you can jump in here if I'm incorrect, Rob, a, a central station has certain, you know, duties above and beyond just a local monitoring company. They have code requirements to respond within a certain timeframe per whatever type of alarm it is, whether it's a trouble or, you know, a, a actual fire alarm, like a water flow alarm from a sprinkler system, or a smoke alarm. So the, you know, you might think that, you know, some people think that we at the fire department, at our fire station, get that alarm. That's not the way it works. It's, it's by a monitoring company. They're either a central, a, a central station, which is at a higher level than just a monitoring company. They have, they have requirements per NFPA 72 they have to meet. And so we're requiring that if you have a monitored fire alarm, yes, this is more, more for commercial, commercial buildings, not, not a, not a residence. If you have, if you require a fire alarm system in your business, it has to be centrally monitored.
What, what triggers the requirement to have that kind of a fire alarm system in your commercial building? Is it the type of commercial building, or is it, I'm just wondering what buildings are required to have that kind of alarm system?
Well, a commercial building, I think, if you were to, you know, build a new commercial building, it has to be centrally monitored. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, did anybody in the audience wanna speak to this item? Seeing none, bringing it back, would somebody like to make a motion? How about you, Peter?
I'll make a motion, sure. I move to introduce and read by title only an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending chapters 8.04 and 8.06 of the Town of Fairfax Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2019 California Fire Code, portions of the 2018 International Wildland Urban Interface Code with certain additions, insertions, deletions, and changes thereto.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, none in that motion carries. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, so guess what? It's 10 o'clock. So at 10 o'clock, we're gonna ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. I think we've got item 5, 8. We also have item 16. And. And the master fee schedule, number 11. So I think we can finish those up. And if everybody agrees with me, let's finish them up. Okay, so let's move forward on item 5. And I don't, is this you, Ben? This is receive an update on the Planning Commission's recommended zoning amendment to incorporate the requirement for Hill Area Residential Development, HRD permit into the residential zoning district. Ben, please take it away.
Okay, first a question. Do you want me to give an oral report and just respond to questions?
I think a very brief oral report that explains what this is about and what this is gonna do.
Okay, certainly. Madam Mayor, members of the council. The town council had previously asked the planning commission to explore, including in the Hill Area Residential Development Permit Requirements, as commonly known as HRD requirements, inclusion of the planned development district, zoning district. When we were previously looking at the PDD, it was noted that this was excluded from consideration for HRD requirements. And the planning commission subsequently did that at three meetings. And at the last October 17th meeting, voted to recommend a revised ordinance to the council. It's noted that in the course of their typical thorough investigation into zoning amendments, that they determined that there were a number of additional zoning districts to which the HRD requirements were not currently applicable, and directed staff to investigate the whys of that and whether or not that should indeed be included. And staff concluded that, yes, it was a good idea to include the additional zoning districts. And these include the UR 7 and UR 10 Upland Residential Districts, the SFRMP, which is Residential Master Plan District, and the, the RMS, Multiple Family Residential, Senior Residential District. In addition, there was a question about triggers for applying the HRD district, which is an overlay district. It sort of floats. It doesn't have a particular zone. What happens is if a project meets certain thresholds, the regulations in that chapter, Chapter 17072, would apply. And when we were investigating particular triggers, we realized that the applicability section referred to maps in the general plan that were relating to the prior general plan, the 1974 general plan, not the 2012 general plan. And so in an effort to provide equivalency of those earlier maps, staff researched what those maps consisted of and came up with an updated version. What we determined is several things. First is that the, the, the items referred to, and that's specifically Exhibit 3, Open Space Element of the Fairfax General Plan. And again, this is not the current applicable general plan, this is the prior general plan, that that was dealing with items such as slope stability. And that when we were looking at, well, should we just try to apply that prior general plan map? Or is there something that maybe represents a more updated version? That there was in fact an updated map. And that's the one that's referred to, commonly referred to as the Salem Rice Maps. The full title is The Interpretation of the Relative Stability of Upland Slops in the Upper Ross Valley and the Western Part of Santa Fel area, Marin County, California. And when staff looked at the prior general plan and the work that had been done by various people, Ian McCarg, you know, an absolutely huge figure in the development of overlay mapping and constraints analysis, and specifically the information that went into the town's 1974 general plan, it was determined that that work that was done to the date of adoption of the general plan was manifested in the maps that the town subsequently adopted. However, Salem Rice and the other authors, who are mentioned in the general plan, subsequently produced a detailed map that's in 1976, after adoption of the general plan. And staff concluded that it was more useful to use that updated document. First of all, it involved the same individuals working on it. It, the, the work product, this map that they developed in 76, was referenced in the general plan as anticipated coming online. And it was subsequently produced. The detail available in the 1976 map is much greater than in the 1974 map. So the 74 maps, in essence, applied as a source document to the subsequent 1976 map. Other aspects include the fact that what's referred to in the zoning ordinance is, as near as staff can determine, never existed by that title in the, in the general plan. In other words, the Exhibit 3A, there is nothing in the prior general plan that's in Exhibit 3A that the nearest likely item that, that is referred to is something called the suitability for open space map. So usually when you're using an ordinance and trying to apply triggers and saying, if it's in this map, then you have to go through this process, it needs to be specifically referenced, and it wasn't. So that was another concern about looking at that, using that prior map. So staff, in an effort to continue to provide maximum information to decision-makers, will come back to the planning commission at their November 21 meeting. When we explain to the planning commission the rationales behind what, what map should be used as a reference, they agree that the 1976 map was the appropriate one to apply. We have since started the digitization of that 1976 map. And we'll have that digitized for review by the planning commission. We will also have the original source maps that the commission can look at as for comparison purposes. So this is kind of an ongoing discussion. And we'll provide that information to the planning commission and if persons are interested in those maps. We're also in the process of digitizing all of the 1974 maps that are referenced in the general plan. And we'll create an online archive of those maps. So it'll be available for the public to use. Right now, there kind of are an archival quality issue because they're, they're 40-something year old maps and they're in pretty fragile condition. So this is an idea to somehow make it available for the public to see, but not necessarily worry about whether or not we can use that product in today's environment, so.
Okay, it sounds excellent. Thank you. I think that's a good update. But I think one of the things I heard was that it's going to the planning commission again November 21st. And so you're basically just updating us with some information on what's going on on that, is that correct?
Well, the planning commission has passed a resolution recommending your council adopt the revisions. This is a status update because we knew we needed to get the digitized version of the map. And so it was.
So we don't have the revisions yet? That'll be coming to the council? There's nothing in this staff report?
Correct. This is just a brief stat, status update. The planning commission's gonna have an opportunity to review those maps again. And then we'll be, we'll be presenting those updated maps to your council when it's brought before your council for consideration.
Okay, so maybe December or January, or something like that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, good to know. Any questions for staff?
If I may, Mayor, yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm pleased to, I'm, well, half pleased and half kinda taken aback. Because I had suggested updating the HRD provisions to encompass the PDD almost a year ago. And I guess it's like pulling on that thread on the cardigan sweater. But it's, it's kinda good to unravel and see the sort of infirmities and weaknesses in the underlying ordinance and then the underlying references. and then the underlying references to the general plan. So, I was kind of scratching my head going, you know, why is it taking so long?
Well, I think one of the things to remember is cannabis and 5G. Spend a lot of time at the Planning Commission.
Sure. But anyways, I'm glad to hear that what we're coming up with is a more comprehensive, kind of going right to the roots of these planning documents. And hopefully, that'll result in a more robust hillside residence ordinance. And I'm also glad to see, too, that, much credit to the Planning Commission and staff for seeing these additional zoning districts that should be also included in the hillside residence zones. So, appreciate the update and just hearing about the scope of how much more work is involved in doing this update. So, thank you, and thanks to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Did somebody else have a question?
Good question. Did we ever ascertain why only certain residentially zoned areas have this HRD applicability? Why is UR 10 and UR 7 not covered by the HRD?
No, but when you look at the, well, the UR 10 and 7, I don't know. In terms of the PDD, I believe, as the PDD regulations are written, it's a three-step process, and it has a tremendous amount of information, and it's kind of an iterative process between the developer and the town. Unfortunately, it lacks the objective standards that the state is now mandating be used as the sole basis for evaluating projects. So, I think originally, the assumption was, we have it covered in the PDD regulations. We don't need to use this HRD overlay zone in the PDD zone. But now that the state has really constrained our ability to review projects in a particular planned developments, which are more complex, larger scale projects, it's really incumbent on us to grab objective standards as they exist, and the HRD is where it is. So, the political and regulatory landscape has changed.
And I'm just talking, just if you broke it down to just residential? Why some and not the other?
Yes.
Or we don't know?
Yes. Well, the residential aspect is the one where the regulations are much more limited by the state now. So, if it's strictly commercial, we have the ability to do our typical review.
I think she's asking, why was it not included? So, I think the guess was...
I think Ben was here during that.
Yeah, I think our guess, if you remember, I think to answer her question would be, we believe the HRD was created in 1973, I forget when, the UR zoning was created after that. So, it just probably was never included. That's just a complete guess on staff's part.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Because it's getting late, and I'd like to open it up. I know some folks have been patiently waiting.
I'm good. I mean, I must admit, I'd met with Ben a couple hours on this issue and-
Oh, my God.
And, you know, made these recommendations to include the old maps as source material, basically. I mean, I think it'll go a long way towards-
Well, thank you for doing that.
...support of our work here.
Okay, so I'd like to open it up to comment. I think Frank, you're on your way up.
Thank you, Mayor. Frank Eger, 13 minutes away. Currently, property zone planned district development at Upland Residential cannot be subdivided and access approved via private road. Current codes are the results of four decades of Fairfax Town Council's protecting ridge lines and open space. This proposal is directed squarely at the 10-acre ridge top parcel between Meadowland and Cannon Village, the 62-acre Cannon Village open space, the 18-acre village, the 18-acre lots, there's two nine-acre lots, behind Victory Village and the 99-acre wall property where a subdivision is proposed. By amending the planned development district in the Upland residential zones, Fairfax, with this HRD, Fairfax is giving developers and speculators the right to avoid current Fairfax requirements for access for new ridge line development and development on private open space. The State Division of Mines and Geology sent a state geologist, Ted Smith, to live right here at Fairfax for one year. He mapped our entire town, street by street, parcel by parcel, lot by lot. In 1974, we hired the planning land use firm, Roberts, WMRT, Wallace, McCarg, Roberts and Todd, and they used Ted Smith's field notes to develop that 1974 open space landslide hazard zone map. And it had, it laid out, and I haven't seen this map since I left the council, but it laid out hazard zones from four down to one. The proposed wording in this ordinance, by applying it, says access, this is C, under C, so it's the Hillary Residential Development Overlay Zone, Chapter 17.072. C says access to property is via a private or public undeveloped roadway, and, and then in parentheses, an undeveloped roadway is an unpaved or paper road which must be improved. We currently don't allow access to those zones to develop properties in those zones via a private road or a public undeveloped roadway. I ask you to not change the upper residential zones, UR 7 and UR 10, by amending the Hillary Residential Development Overlay Zone into them until the wall property, I guess also Miranda Heights' environmental impact report is completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Frank, can I ask you a couple of questions, since you're on the council? And maybe you have the historical knowledge. When the UR zones were created, Ben was saying they were created after the hillside residential development ordinance. Is there any reason why they weren't included in the HRD, or was it just possibly an oversight issue? Or if you have the recollection, it was 40 years ago?
Sure, sure. I actually developed that zone. I used Marin County's A60 zoning as a basis for Fairfax's Upland Residential 7, Upland Residential 10. And that was Fairfax's equivalent of an A60 zone. It was Fairfax's large lot zoning. And we believed that we had sufficient controls over where those properties were when we did it. In fact, the night the wall property was rezoned, Upland Residential 10, Dr. Wall was here in the audience, and I specifically asked him if he understood exactly how tough this new zone was going to be, that we were proposing to zone his property. Two council members opposed that, rezoning it early on. And they thought that it was unfair to the owner, Dr. Wall, to restrict that property in that manner and fashion. Dr. Wall was in the audience, and he stood up and he says, he said he completely agreed with the proposal that we were making, and he had no objection to it. And at that point, the council ended up unanimously voting to rezone the wall property, Upland Residential 10. It was Fairfax's most restrictive zone. So, what happens with the Upland Residential, I'm sorry, with the Hillary Residential Development Overlay Zone, it's going to change the access requirements. It's going to allow someone to access it via private road. You can't access it now.
How, as I understand, the HRD is triggered, it's an overlay, it adds additional restrictions on properties that are listed to fall within the HRD. It doesn't seem to me that by adding the Upland residence zones to be included in the HRD, that that would increase, for example, what you're saying, to make it easier to put in roads. I'm just trying to understand, because my understanding is that HRD would just, if anything, it would add restrictions to the UR zone, but it wouldn't negate or take away restrictions? Is, am I incorrect on that?
You are, you are.
And so, how?
Well, here's what it does. It changes, it changes the access. It allows a private road, a private road to access-
HRD allows a private road to access?
To access, to access a development in that overlay zone. So, you're going to have a conflict. You're going to have Fairfax codes that say, you know, you need 65 feet of frontage on a street, you need a public street to access the development. We've got another code that, I don't know where it's going, it's disappeared, another code that says you can't, you can't access a Fairfax development from another jurisdiction, for instance, county unincorporated land or from San Antonio. So, Fairfax really has tough restrictions on access for new development. And by adopting this Hillary Residential Overlay Zone, it specifically says on C, if you look right on C, it says access to the property is via a private or public undeveloped roadway.
What section are you looking at?
I'm looking at Section C in the ordinance. The ordinance is the Hillary Residential Development Overlay Zone, Chapter 17.072.
Give me that specific site, 17 point? Point 020.
Applicability, applicability.
Okay.
And when you go, there's A, B, and C. A is talking about the maps. B is talking about maps, also landslide zones. And C is the access. It says access to the property is via a private or public undeveloped roadway. Under the Upland residential zone, or the planned development district zone, right now, you can't use a private or public undeveloped road to get to a new development. It's going to create a conflict for the town where the applicant or whoever before you is going to say, well, it says right here, you Upland Residential Overlay Zone, I can use a private road to get up here. And Fairfax is going to say, no, you can't use a private road. You have, according to the town codes, you need a public street to get up there.
Okay.
So, it's going to put you in a dilemma.
Okay, so I thank you for that explanation. I don't have the codes in front of me.
Okay.
But Ben, did you hear Frank's concerns in?
Yes. I can say this, that the Miranda Heights property, both portions of the development will be accessed via public rights of way, and those roads are required to be built to public road standards. That's part of the plan, and that will continue to be part of the plan.
So, what about Frank's concern that adding the UR zones to the HRD zones will allow sort of easier access for potential road development? And if you don't have an answer right now, I would like to see that addressed, just to ensure that, you know, Frank's concern, if he is correct, that that is considered in, you know, in weighing whether to go forward with this. I don't have the benefit of having these things in front of me to make my own assessment. But if it's, it sounds like a potentially important concern, and I would just want to see it considered, at least and addressed in some form.
Yeah, we'll research that and should have some response when we discuss that at the Planning Commission and then bring it back to your council.
Okay, thank you.
I won't be here for that, but Frank, I appreciate you bringing these concerns, and I appreciate staff looking into them and-
You can come back with me when it comes for the council.
There you go.
Yeah, I'll bet you'll still be in this room, Peter, because I'm going to bug you until you are. And I will be here also.
Okay. So, next speaker, please. You need to turn the microphone on, please.
Yes, I will. Peter, I really appreciate the comments that you're making tonight so much, and we will really miss you, actually, because they're insightful. And I guess part of the problem I'm having tonight is kind of the snide little remarks I'm seeing over here and the little giggling.
So, I will not-
I am going to finish.
I will not stand for-
And the kind of giggling and stuff like that, because it's really not good to have that sort of stuff as a reflection-
So, these are not-
-on the town residents. No, there is no excuse for this.
Excuse me, Valerie. I will not allow you to denigrate or question the motives of staff. They have not been making snide comments.
You know what? We are back here watching it, Barbara, and so you might-
So am I.
Excuse me, it's my time.
So, Valerie, excuse me, I will not allow you to do that. So, start over.
Okay, so, start over, is next time, pay a little attention to what's going on so that residents don't feel that happening, because we sit back here and watch it, and we watch you allow it to happen all the time. And we're really tired of it.
I don't appreciate you questioning my motives either.
I'm not questioning your motives, I'm questioning, I'm talking about your actions or lack of actions.
Thank you, Valerie.
So, I'm going to finish my actual comments.
Well, go ahead.
When you start, stop interrupting. Do you think you can do that? Thank you. So, what I see this action ending up being, as the basis of lawsuits. I think Frank has really outlined that if you create conditions that obviously make a little window for doubt, that is the crack in the edifice. We have the only town left in Marin County that protects its ridge lines, as you are well aware of, and they are worth millions and millions and millions of dollars to developers. And it is your job to continue to protect that, and we are going to continue to come down here and raise this issue every time it looks like you are attempting to create a crack. Now, you can call that asking about your motivations. We have no idea what your motivations are. We're simply addressing some problems that we see, perhaps in rationale, perhaps in logic. I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My comments are in a slightly similar vein. I feel like I hear two things. I made a comment on this before when the whole thing with the PDD change was happening a while ago, and I heard the planning director talk about, we're trying to deal, get objective standards, there's pressure from the state now, and I hear that, and it sounds very reasonable, and I'm like, okay, that's good. And then we have a former town official, who was actually, the only person in the room was here, and saying that these things happened in the 70s and other times, and it says it a different way. And I brought this up before, and this is a thing that continues to deeply concern the citizens, is why do we have this disconnect? And how can we get clarity? And how can we get something so that we can have confidence in what's happening and that the decisions that are being made, the things that are being contemplated, and the direction things are going, are in fact what's being asserted? And we hear from the staff that we're trying to make it better and stronger and whatever, and protect ourselves or whatever. And then we hear, you're opening cracks, there's holes, something's not right. And so, I don't, this is over my head, I'm not all in the, I don't understand all ordinances to that level of degree, but it is concerning. And it would be really nice if we could get some from the council that could really clarify this for the town and just give it to us straight, and help us understand this in a really, really clear way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening. My name's Chance Cotronno. I just had, is it okay that I have my computer?
Yeah.
Sorry, just tech, you know, I just don't print stuff out. So, I also was looking at this this afternoon, the same stuff that Frank was looking at, actually, with regard to 17.072.020, which is applicability under Chapter 17.072, which is the Hill Area Residential Development Overlay Zone. And the thing that I was confused about, which I was hoping for clarification about, was before it leads to those four different criteria, A, the slope of the property, B, the property falls within the landslide hazard zone of the mysterious Exhibit 3, C, access to the property is via private or public undeveloped roadway, which is like, as Frank was saying, unpaved or paper road, and then D, the property does not meet the minimum building site requirements defined in some other chapters of this code. The, what it leads with is properties zoned RS6, RS7, RD 5.5. So, I'm assuming that like, the next things that this would include are the other, like, Upland Residential 7, Upland Residential 10? That's what I assumed is- That's what I, I assumed is like they're now included in this H R D overlay zone. It says that they fall into the H R D overlay zone if they have any of the following characteristics. And then they lay those three things down. So am I correct in my understanding that if there isn't access to the property via private or public undeveloped roadway, that they don't have that characteristic? And so they would, those particular places wouldn't fall into the H R D overlay zone? Or do they only have to have some of these characteristics in order to fall into this zone?
Did you wanna answer that, Ben or Janet?
Yes, it's basically a trigger, it's triggered, the applicability of the H R D is triggered by those criterions. So you're correct in that if none of those criterion were met, then the H R D provisions would not apply.
And is it one criterion or all of them?
Any one of those.
Any one, okay. I think that was your question, right?
Absolutely, yeah. So it, it could, if, if it fits one criteria but not another, it could still open the door for something theoretically?
It would still trigger the applicability of the H R D provisions, any one.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could, just to clarify, Ben, if it triggers the H R D provisions, that actually puts more restrictions on a, a development of that parcel, is that correct? In addition to the existing U R restrictions?
Yes, and, and I would point out that in any project that's subject to an E I R, the, the information and analysis and restrictions and requirements that would occur with that E I R process would be far in excess of a non-E I R process. So, for example, the, the Marin Heights property, the information we already have and will continue to develop for that far exceeds the normal H R D review, which is pretty much geared towards individual projects, individual residences. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's additive to the under, to the zoning district requirements. And where we have an E I R, it's additive to what the H R D.
And it wouldn't weaken the other existing zoning?
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Mark, did you have some comment?
Just to add onto what Richard, I think where Richard was going, is like all of you have run that you're here to protect the ridge lines and to uphold the codes and the ridge line codes of the town of Fairfax. So, you know, every now and then, it might be nice if you would say, you know what? This is what I ran on as a plank in my platform when I ran for Town Council. And the least I would expect is that if it turned out that you were wrong, or you were incorrect, or you somehow didn't follow through on that, that at least you would resign. I mean, it would be nice if we could sue you if that turned out to be the case, but probably not. But I think if, if you kept reiterating that you're here for the town of Fairfax and that you all ran for the ridge lines, protecting them from development, I think it might help overall that your image with the public. And one other note is, I didn't have a chance to research it very much, and also because there was a gag order, but the Buck Center for Research on Aging caused major damage to the houses that were actually much further away than where the houses are in Marin, the existing houses are in Marin. And if you have geological issues at the wall property, you're gonna see massive damage to the houses below. That's it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back to the council, I want to remind people that this is an update and it sounds like there's some direction to staff, but John, did you wanna speak on this item?
Yeah, there's a lot to say on this and I think a lot of things are being mischaracterized. I mean, my impression of what this discussion we've just had is that these things are additive to, to what's already there, right? So basically what you just referred to, Mark, with, you know, the houses underneath, that, that is specifically what this, this overlay is supposed to address. I mean, if, if you look, I mean, I have pictures of the maps that, you know, are basically falling apart, but spread them out on the table and took pictures of them. And these will, are being digitized right now so that they can go into the public record and anybody can look at them. And they're being, that, right now, the proportions of them don't match up to the Marin map thing. So after that, they're being digitally stretched to fit each other so that you can look up specific parcels and see where these slides, these different zones are. You know, there's, you know, as Frank was saying, there's zone one through four. And zones three and four, you know, they're all over the hillsides. And we know what they look like, they're the slide zones that are, you know, the steep parts that are basically unbuildable. So basically this codifies that and makes that plain to anybody who's looking at that so that, you know, it, it's really clear that, you know, this is a slide zone, this is a really steep area and it's, you know, anybody even thinking about building there is gonna have a lot of problems. You know, that it's, that's what that nineteen seventy-six map, which is also referred to as the Salem Rice map, you know, which we, is probably that Exhibit Three that's referred to in the nineteen seventy-four general plan that anticipates this nineteen seventy-six map, that the source material was done by Ted Smith in his field notes in seventy-two, seventy-three, or, you know, the, the earlier map that we have. And, you know, we have a number of things that protect hillsides. I think everybody here doesn't like, you know, wants to protect our ridge lines. And everybody in Fairfax cares about that quite a bit. However, there's not a specific, you know, thing that you look up in the, in the code that says, oh, this is our ridge line ordinance. It's, it's done in a bunch of different ways. And there's a bunch of, you know, like it talks about slope, it talks about, you know, all these things and there's reasons why the ridge line ordinances are there. And basically, that is the details of the law. And everybody here is working hard to uphold exactly that, the principles of it and what's going on. And so, and to say, oh, we're trying to undermine that is really an insult to your community and your, to your council, because that is not at all what we're doing. So I take offense, to be honest. I, I think we've heard a lot of information, new information, which is very useful and I, you know, I thank you, Peter, and we've worked together on this to try to bring this to the Planning Commission. And I think that the work, the Planning Commission is really good, that they've been doing. And I look forward to the, you know, to answering some of these other questions. It gives me reassurance to hear that they're additive to each other. And I'd look forward to, you know, verifying legal opinion of that later, you know, when it comes back to us. But I, well, I think this is really important and so I'm glad we're doing this. And so thank you very much for this report.
Peter, did you wanna add some information?
Yeah, I just wanted to address some of the comments from the public. So it, it, this is a process. This is just an update of kind of a, what's going on in the process. And it, it's a little complicated because what we're talking about is the H R D, it is something that is additive to other zoning designations. And it's triggered by certain criteria. And Frank, I appreciate your comments and concerns and I've asked Ben to look at those and make sure that those concerns of yours are addressed and that this doesn't somehow weaken the upland zoning restrictions. I, based on just my recollection of the hillside residence zone and the discussion, brief discussion of what those, how those triggers work, I, I, I'm a little doubtful that it will have the effect that you are suggesting, Frank. But I appreciate you bringing it forward and it's something we need to investigate. This, it is a, a complex process, so all the input from the public is really good. It's kind of troubleshooting, but I, I tend to think that it won't have that effect. But I do wanna have it looked at and vetted. So there'll be an opportunity at the Planning Commission. And Frank, I hope you bring your concerns up when there's an actual ordinance that's fleshed out. But, and, and it's my hope, and I think it's everyone's hope and intention, that in, in revising these ordinances, that we create a more robust, more protective series of ordinances that work together. There's been some disconnect between how these different various ordinances work. And that's the process that the Planning Commission has been going through with staff is kind of troubleshooting that, seeing where the disconnects are and fixing that. So I invite everyone's participation as this moves forward. And I think it's everyone's intent to increase the strength of these ordinances. And, and it's very good to be cautious and skeptic, skeptical and with an eye to make sure that we're not undoing anything. And I think that process will unfold in the coming months. So, you know, stay tuned and Ben, I would appreciate you addressing Frank's concerns as the process moves forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could I make just a quick comment?
Sure.
To Peter's response. Peter, I made, I made the same presentation to the Planning Commission.
Yes, I watched it.
You watched it. I mean, I, you know, I, this is nothing new. And, and I, and so it's here tonight before you, just as it was before the Plan, just as it was before the Planning Commission, so that's why I'm here again, making the same presentation.
Thank you, Frank.
Frank, I'll, for my, I, I'm gonna take a look at this seventeen point zero seven two, point oh two oh subsection C. And I'll, I'll have a discussion with you later and see if, if I share your concerns after I look at that.
Okay, thank you. Renee?
Yeah, no, I just have a comment in response to Richard and this, this feeling of the public not trusting us and that we're never going to mend because we have an agenda. And I want to say that how I feel sitting here right now is like I've had my hand slapped, but no one said why. And I would like to really, really ask that before we get to a meeting where everyone is very angry, that there is an outreach. I speak with Larry Bragman at times because he's able to say, hey, and talk to me about it. And I feel as though I'm, I'm someone who is open to that. I've worked with a lot of things that don't seem to be the thing that I might, you know, be representing for the community, but I have listened and been able to work with people on, on so many issues. And I think many of you know that. I would really appreciate not being slapped in public when I had no warning or way to really do the research and the homework to the extent. This is new for me. I would like to learn from a forty-year council member, but we need to figure out a way that if we're gonna, if we're gonna get anywhere and not, not seed more distrust, that there's some communication. And so I would, I would ask that that happened prior to sitting here on the dais and, and being confronted with that sort of intensity.
Thank you, Renee.
So I, I agree with all of those comments and I'll just add mine to it, that new information, first of all, what we're doing tonight is not taking any action, we're receiving a report and we're commenting on it, and we've done that. And what has come out of this commenting is that there's one specific area which has been called attention to, that we should take a look at and make sure it's not a conflict in the law or a weakening of the law, either one. And that's what will be done. So that's what we intended to do, that's what will be done. I don't see a problem with that. But, and I appreciate the comments that have been made, whether it turns out that there was in fact the potential of either a conflict or a weakening of the law, or whether it turns out that there wasn't, I appreciate you bringing it up. But I definitely do not appreciate being told that our motives are not the, not the motives to save, to, to preserve the ridge lines, because I don't believe that's the case with any of my fellow council members, certainly not with myself. And I don't appreciate staff being insulted. And I don't appreciate the constant sowing of dissension in the community by this constant drumbeat of suspicion and conspiracy. It's just unnecessary. So we would all communicate better, we would all get more done if we could just let go of this dissension and just talk with each other as if we actually had some kind of trust for each other. Because all of us, staff, the Planning Commission, we on the council, are working our level best to take care of this town. That's why we're here. We're not here because it's fun to sit up here and get yelled at or to be working until midnight. We're here because we're doing this for the town. So just try to accept that.
Thank you, Bruce.
And thank you for your comments.
I just wanna say a couple of things. I wasn't one of the council members, I believe it was John and Peter who asked for this. And it is my understanding, which John reiterated tonight, that the idea was to add some more restrictive requirements, not to take anything away. I also wanna say that I'm frustrated. I have spent forty years as an environmental scientist protecting public health and the environment, in the state and in the nation. And I don't think anybody else can say that who's sitting in this audience. I have cleaned up hazardous waysites. I've created programs to ensure schools were built on environmentally safe properties. I worked at the Port of Oakland to make sure those trucks are not continuing to impact people from diesel and lead. Nobody else has done that. And for somebody to say that I have some kind of motivation to destroy this town and to be personally insulted, as well as my fellow council members, I'm tired of it. And I also wanna say, I sat on the Open Space Committee for eight years and I didn't do that for fun. I did that because I wanted to give back to my community and help save what we love so much about this community. But the political landscape has changed and the laws have changed. So some of what has been in the code, unfortunately, is, is not gonna hold up. And what we're trying to do is add strength. I'm glad that Frank brought up this issue and I'm glad that Peter and others asked Ben to really look into it. Let's make sure we're not doing something unintended consequences. But I just wanna say, it's time for all of us to just really say, you know, if I had motivations of grandeur of destroying this town, I certainly wouldn't be doing it sitting here. I would be doing it from outside. And I've only just cared about this community and cared about the state and the country. And so not too many people who are sitting in this audience have a couple of degrees and are scientists and have really spent their life dedicated to helping people. So we all make mistakes and I'd rather that instead of accusing us of purposely trying to do something to circumvent the rights of people in this town or to change the town, that at least say, we're human and we're doing the best we can. So with that, thank you, and we will move on to item eight. So with that, thank you, and we will move on to item eight. Notice of amendments to employment agreement with the town manager, and I think I'll take this one on. I'll do a quick staff report on this. So just to talk about, one of the things the town did back in 2015 is there was a grand jury report on labor negotiations, which asked for having final employment, employment agreements on council agendas to be taken up initially, to be available, and then taken up again after thirty days. And that was really for bargaining units, but we made a commitment as this council, and I'm not sure that other councils have done that, that we would do that with all agreements. So one of the things we instituted, thank you, Ben, was to make sure we were doing performance agreement, uh, performance reviews of our town manager. And we, we started that in really, I think, when I was mayor back in 2015, of doing more extensive performance reviews than what were done in the past. And we also looked at retaining our town manager, who has brought so much to this town, has secured millions in grants, that he does very quietly, without really making a big fanfare about it. For example, just the most recent grant to, um, grant application to make our community service center be part of our EOC and expand those capabilities. That's just something he, he takes on without asking permission and just moves forward, despite his many other assignments. And also the Federal Highway Administration grant, that had never been done, and that was for Forest Avenue. And we agreed to just move forward and take the risk that we weren't gonna get funded. That was a pretty expensive project, and Caltrans had never done one of these, and we were awarded the funding. Garrett, since he's been here, has served as the Public Works Director, as well as doing the HR manager work. We don't pay him extra for that. That's just part of what he's taken on, and I find it really disturbing, the personal attacks of Garrett, who has just really worked hard to quietly do things to make this town a better place and enhance our financial, uh, revenue, and just move forward and work with us. So he's, was given a positive review, and we're looking at an increase which includes the following things. So effective December first, 2019, and that would be subject to the council approval in December, the manager's annual monthly base salary will increase from sixteen thousand six sixty-three to seventeen thousand four one two per month. This includes a two percent base salary increase coupled with a two-point-five education incentive for a master's degree. This is an equivalent to a four-point-five percent COLA increase, and the educational incentive is similar to the incentive that police officers receive. Also, we would provide a three-point-five percent contribution to a deferred compensation four fifty-seven account that only happens if the employee, our town manager, provides a one percent match. And we would increase his vacation hours by twenty hours per year. So we've looked at the salaries, and some of you read the IJ and see some of the salaries of the Nevada interim town manager and see some of the increases. Even with this salary adjustment, uh, our town manager would remain one of the lowest-paid town or city managers in Marin. And we don't contemplate, and he may be the lowest, um, we don't contemplate or recommend that similar adjustments or parallel adjustments would happen to salaries or of, or compensation of other town staff. So it's really kind of modest, and there've been some increases over time, but for most of the years, we've just done the COLA as other staff. So we're looking at doing this, and we have a lot of projects coming up that would suffer considerably if Garrett left. And we're also hoping that if we approved this, that he would be willing to commit to stay another four to five years with us and help us out. And so, and one of the things, we're talking about education incentive, but Garrett has a master's degree in public policy from UC Berkeley, and prior to coming to our town, he had twenty-five years of experience with thirteen years as a department head. And it turns out, in my previous life at Cal A P A, I actually met Garrett when he was in Stockton. So to recruit an individual with his kind of level of experience, we would have to pay higher, maybe even than the salary adjustment. So that's the staff report. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, would people in the audience like to comment on this item? I think Mark, you asked for this one.
And when I broached this with people, they were like, a raise? Are you kidding me? So I wrote some things down this afternoon when I had some time. See, it took over two years of having this subject continually brought up for Mr. Toy to finally act to clear the ivy off the bridge on Bridge Court. Why did it take so long to save the town the money of having to replace it? If you're looking at sixty thousand dollars for a bus shelter, I'm assuming that it would probably cost a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars to fix that bridge that runs between Dominga and Forest. Mr. Toy opposed a drop-in steel bridge replacement for Meadow Way that would have cost around five hundred thousand dollars and would put Fairfax's share at about sixty thousand. I think it's a twelve percent, where Fairfax has to come up on, uh, come up with. And it insists that Fairfax put in a three million dollar bridge, which means that twelve percent of that is four hundred twenty thousand, and then the Fairfax share for the consultant fees would be an additional ninety-six thousand. Uh, I think that's all, uh, some of that's already been paid. We're looking at Cannon Village records in the Meadowland, which supposedly were lost. We spent over two hours at a town council meeting, hear about how the records were lost or missing or rotted out or got moldy and disintegrated. And then finally, Michelle said, oh, I have the minutes for that meeting. We spent over two hours hearing, oh, no, we don't know where the records are, which basically gave more open space, or actually guaranteed open space, for the fifty-three homes that were built. And then we were told that that's not true. Victory Village, the corporate representative stated unequivocally at a town council meeting on television that the Marin Community Foundation was giving money to Victory Village earmarked to make the eighteen acres open space. There was no follow-up on getting this in writing by Mr. Toy. Otherwise, the town would have found out immediately that this statement was a total fabrication, and this should have triggered an annulment of the agreement. Let's look at the garbage contract. Marin sanitary requests a twenty-two percent rate hike. He farms this out. Why would someone with his years of experience and his salary, why can't they deal with what should be a routine, uh, contract? Why do we have to hire an outside consultant? I found that very confusing. Also, the contract with that kind of raise wasn't even put out to bid. The consultant who got hired said, there's another company who's trying to get a foothold in Marin, we maybe could have had cheaper rates for two or three years. As it turned out, we got the highest percentage increase in our garbage fee.
Thank you, Mark.
We got our har, we got the highest interest, uh, the highest rate increase in all of Marin.
Thank you, Mark.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
You've gone over your time, thank you.
I've gone over my time?
Yes, you have.
Oh, I have more.
Okay.
So really, let me just boil it down to this.
Mark, thank you.
A raise? Are you kidding me?
Thank you. Uh, would anybody else like to speak on this topic? Chance, are you coming up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't have like a lot of, like, facts and figures like that, or like, you know, like visceral stories and stuff, but I just, um, I just graduated with my master's in public administration from Presidio Graduate School, and, uh...
Congratulations.
Thanks, appreciate it. Uh, it was, it was fantastic, but, um, you know, taking some of these classes and then seeing it being implemented, like, you can see a lot going on in a small town like Fairfax. And so I found it just amazing to know that there's like someone, like a staff person, who like wears all these different hats and ki, and like, not just has to know a little bit about a lot, but has to know a lot about a lot. And I don't know where you keep all that information, but like, that's, that's really impressive, um, and something that I admire. So I just think it's fantastic that we have Garrett here doing this stuff, and, um, just, it's great that we're acknowledging that the value that's being brought, even though there, there might be stumbling blocks for certain citizens and stuff like that, I think just overall, there's just so much value. So, thanks.
Thank you, Chance. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back. So we're not making, this will be on the December agenda, basically, we're just receiving notice, so thank you, and we will move on.
Actually, Barbara, I'd like to just address...
Quick break.
I, I wanted to address some of the comments.
You know, we're really running out of time, and I think there was some misinformation, but I think part of what we tend to do is get into debates with people, and we've covered these topics many times.
Right, I, well, I'd like to comment, just because it's my last meeting, and, um...
You'll be here for a few minutes.
Uh, I'll, I'll keep it brief. Yeah, I, I echo all the points that Barbara raised in the staff report. I think Garrett has done a phenomenal job, and a very difficult job, juggling many, many different priorities, wearing many, many different hats, and I think he's shown a lot of great initiative, a lot of creativity, um, and sensitivity to the, the needs of Fairfax. One thing that he came up with, which was very useful, was refinancing our pension obligations. His ability to find sources for funding for public works projects shows a lot of really careful initiative. A lot of things that, that we don't see, I think, are a tribute to Garrett's good management, too. Our personnel, we issue, our, we've, haven't had any out-of-control personnel issues. I think that's a, a function of really good management. The salary that Garrett commands for the amount of work is, I think, really, really low, especially compared to anything in the, in the private sector. It's a, Garrett has a very, very difficult job, and I think he's been unfairly scapegoated by some members of the community. And, and I, I, I find that really unfortunate and very undeserving. And I, you know, to hear these kinds of attacks on Garrett, I, I take them personally. It makes me upset, 'cause I've, see the hard work that Garrett does, and, uh, I, I think the raise, the modest increase it is proposed here, is, it's a great deal for Fairfax, and I have a lot of respect, having worked closely with Garrett over the last four years. So I'm very, very happy and very proud to support this raise for Garrett. It's very deserved, and as Barbara said, it's very important to maintain the continuity that, that Garrett brings. So I hope that I won't be here to vote on the approval of this in December, but I would certainly vote for it if I were sitting on the council to make that decision.
Thank you very much, Peter, that was well said. Let's make it quick, it's, we will have an opportunity to speak on this in December.
Right, but I just want to say, for the record right now, and this, I don't have to be mushy, because it's not my last meeting, I don't think. But just for information for the public is, you know, we have no Public Works Director. The, the most comparable Public Works Director, if we were to have one, would be in San Anselmo, where they make a base pay of fifteen thousand dollars a month. I've always pushed, because I think we need it in order to acquire more grants, especially a grant that unbeknownst to me, we acquired last week, which is the Safe Routes to Schools Grant through the Transportation Authority of Marin, which is going to create a flashing beacon system at the top of Azalea going across Drake to the Fairfax Market, which is desperately needed. And in order to engineer that, it has to have a pathway, and then it has to work for the intersection at Broadway and Azalea, which is now going to have sharrows, it will have a walking pathway, it'll be a safe intersection. Garrett acquired that money at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars without the Safe Routes to Schools rep, nor the Transportation Authority of Marin rep even knowing it. So I, I just, that's something that keeps me going, well, maybe we don't need to hire a Public Works Director. I didn't say that. But truly, that, that, that's cost benefit for you, and I just think that we don't tell these stories enough, but thank you for that, because that is one of the big things we called out in the bicycle pedestrian plan, and our advisory committee called out as a major area of priority, and we got it. So thank you.
Thank you. And so just to wrap this up, I think Garrett's humility and quiet, sort of moving forward on things and never sort of creating fanfare gives an illusion that isn't really what's happening. So, uh, thank you, we'll take this up in December. Now, our next item is the town's master fee schedule, and then we have one item after that. Smart meter, we'll finish it, it'll be quick. Okay, so Garrett, do you want to do the staff report? I know we had a presentation last time, and I brought my copy.
Sorry.
Oh, we have a new presentation, okay.
So, first of all, thanks for all those comments on item eight. Part of what makes it all work is, is the council, so that's all I'll say on number eight, but it's a pleasure to serve.
It's a team sport, and we could have gone on longer. Barbara, we've gotten too pissed off.
If it was eight o'clock.
Yeah, okay. So master fee schedule, so this is, as you recall, you did this last Oc, last October, just last month, we had a presentation from, sorry, I gotta grab my notes, presentation from Revenue and Cost Specialists. We actually contracted with them in July two thousand and eighteen, prepare a fee study and cost allocation plan. As you know, last time the town ever did a study was in two thousand and nine. In general, since two thousand and nine, other than recreation fees, we haven't increased any of the other fees, and again, October second is when you first received this report. So what I did was, I copied in some of the slides from RCS, and so really, what RCS did really is they were trying to treat the services as you would, like private companies, and was trying to match up the revenues to the actual costs to provide the services. And within that, what happens is, you build in the indirect services, like finance, HR, town manager, town clerk, whoever's involved in the process, that's not really a direct cost, but it's more of an indirect cost. We have some things that are called direct services. Those are more community general services, like police, street maintenance, not charged to anybody per se, 'cause it's a community-wide benefit. And then you get to what RCS calls a personal choice, fee services. Those are the fees that someone in the community, like applicant for use permit, they're receiving a specific benefit, and so the discussion and policy is, how much do you want to charge for that? Do you want to cover all your costs, a portion of your costs? 'Cause some things may be, like senior services, you may say, that's gonna be something the town should pay for, we shouldn't charge any fees for those classes or courses. So the methodology, really quick, was just, he, pretty much RCS met with all the employees to try to figure out who provide those services. with all the employees to try to figure out who provide those services, figure out the actual time they spent on the costs, and then came up with a plan of how you're going to calculate those indirect costs and then how to allocate it. But the bottom line really is RCS indicated, they thought that in our current fee schedule, that there's a possible cost recovery of about $270,000 a year if you were to adopt all the recommendations, which we actually aren't. And so staff, working with the Finance Subcommittee, and that's the mayor and the vice mayor, we talked about all these issues. And one of the thing really was about the fairness and reasonableness of the fees. For example, for planning, you have to be a little careful because if you charge the full rate for something, then maybe someone's not going to come in and get your building permit. And so example, that is use permit for minor residential, that's probably the most common use permit per our code. And the actual cost to provide that service is probably closer to $2,800. We charge $813, but the recommendation from the Subcommittee was, let's increase it a little bit to nine something, I think to 915, and then we'll just increase it by 10% a year. And what happens is, it goes from a cost recovery of roughly, say, 25% to a little over 50%. Still fair and reasonable, not a full cost recovery, but yet probably at the level where people still pull the permit. And so that's kind of the goal. But, so really a quick summary, as I said, for planning fees, you'd have the initial increase in fiscal year 2021. So you still have several months before that would happen. And then it'd be phased in over the next five-year period. So from 2020, I'm sorry, from 2122 to fiscal year 2526, that's five years, you would increase it by 10% a year. Some of the things under planning, just to point out, we don't do a lot of EIRs. And what we discovered, the EIRs just had a flat fee of $2,500, which isn't nearly enough to cover the staff time involved with such a undertaking. And so we've moved that to more of a deposit base. So we charge our actual costs against the deposit. And then we would just ask for more deposits as we move through the process. And in some, we just increased the deposit requirements, like zoning amendments, I think deposit was two or $3,000. We increased that to $5,000. Terms of building fees, a little more straightforward. We're just recommending that we increase it by 5% a year over the next six years. Police, it's just all one-time increases, no phase-in. Recreation, community services, pretty much it's just an increase in rental fees effective in 2021, and they just go up by $5 to $10 an hour. Townwide administrative fees, one-time increases in fiscal year 2021. The only exception being the banners. We're recommending an initial increase, I think of $20 and a $10 increase over the remaining years. Still pretty affordable for the, mainly there's nonprofits that do it, but we thought those are probably costs that they could bear. Terms of the revenue estimates, which is the key number, currently overall revenues are about a 49% cost recovery. In 2021, we think if you were to implement the recommendations, that would go up to about 55%. And that's the total revenue we collect for services. What that means is that would add about $73,000 or a 12% increase in fee revenue in fiscal year 2021. And something to think about is, if we spread that over a 10-year period from the previous 10 years, 2009 to 2019, that's really an average of 1.2% a year. CPI during that period was averaging 2.7%. So you could see, it seems like a lock in one time, but if really over a 10-year period, it really wasn't very much. And what we anticipate, oh, sorry. And what we anticipate is at the end of the six-year period really from now, fiscal year 2526, we think our overall cost recovery would be closer to 65%. So really, we're phasing in planning and building fees. Over that five-year period, we're phasing it in. It probably comes in an average of about 3.3% overall increase over that time period on the average, probably around what CPI would be. But the bottom line would be in fiscal year 2526, you'd anticipate you'd collect about another $190,000 in revenue, or about 70% of the $270,000 possible that RCS said that we could collect. Terms of just some analysis, things to keep in mind, Recreation Community Services, that's always heavily subsidized. It's our largest subsidy area. That's all market-driven and kind of a community service factor. Like we hold community events, we don't charge for that. Senior programming, we don't charge for that. And those are important things for the community. So really, what we see even by increasing rental fees, your cost recovery for recreation is going to go from maybe 25 to 26%. Pretty nominal, but still you get something. And pretty much with recreation fees, we recommend we take a look at it annually during the budget process. Planning and building revenue, I think in general, that's the most common fee that we're charging to people. And obviously that represents, if at the end of the six-year period, we can collect about 70, no, I'm sorry, in fiscal year 2021, if we collect about $73,000 more, $52,000 or 70% of that, it's all from planning and building fees. You could see that's the bulk of the revenue. Police revenues go up by $12,000. Pretty much their cost recovery goes to a little more than 40% from 25%. It's pretty nominal increase in townwide and admin fees. Overall, I would say the Finance Subcommittee of the Council and Staff really tried to take something that was fair and reasonable, phase it in over time. We have lots of time to give notice, but it's really a six-year period in order to get into the process. Seems pretty reasonable. A lot of RCS clients, and even if, if you, one example being the county, the county Marin just for building fees, they took a look and just said, okay, one time, we're just going to increase it by 50% because we're so far behind in terms of the actual cost for delivering services. RCS in general, they recommend a possible amount. A lot of their clients just go to that amount in that time. So, next is, I just have it in case you wanted to go through the fee tables.
We probably don't need to do that right now.
So I'm not going to do that. I have it if you want to. But last time, you continued it just so you'd have some time to take a look at things. So that pretty much concludes the staff report.
Did you want to do the last slide, which is building permit revenues, 5% per year? I think, I don't know if you want to. I'm just, there's one last slide.
Oh, yeah, that was the summary of the.
The whole thing.
Of the summary for buildings. So building, we're proposing it goes up 5% a year.
Okay. Well, thank you. And just want to point out that when the Subcommittee met, we looked at every fee, discussed every page of that report. And I think it is pretty reasonable. And having read the IJ and seen, the county wasn't out that much money. It was a little under $300,000 and they decided to just increase 50%. Remember, their budget is over $400 million? And so I think we really tried to do a reasonable approach. And thanks to Vice Mayor Goddard and Mike Favretta and Janet Garvin and RCS. And I just want to mention something. I worked at Department of Toxic Substances Control and we were trying to look at the same kind of thing for all, to try to cost recovery everything. And I think we spent upwards of $750,000 and never got anything quite as good as this. And convened a blue ribbon commission with the governor. And this was $25,000 for some pretty incredible work. So it was quite a, really savings and really shows us what the delta is. So, any questions of staff? I'm sorry for bringing that up, but I was part of the committee. Seeing none, would people like to comment on this that are sitting in the audience?
So you technically opened the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I, you know, we've, we've gone through a lot. So I would like to open the public hearing. And would members of the public like to weigh in during the public hearing process? Seeing none, I would like to close the public hearing and bring it back. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Before we do, I just wanted to comment. Thank you, Mayor, for continuing this for a month.
Sure.
I went through and.
Every page?
Eyeballed it. Well, I skimmed every page. And I appreciate all the work that went into it. And, you know, it's a balance of, you know, policy, keeping fees down, you know, sort of a subsidy for public policy reasons versus trying to recover some of our costs. I think this, this strikes the right balance. And it's, it's a lot of work and a lot of effort to review it, but I think it kind of strikes the right balance overall. So.
Thank you for that comment. So would somebody like to make a motion? Peter, how about you? Oh, okay, Bruce, go ahead.
Oh, you were going to? All right. Well, I think this is a simple one, but I'll also echo that comment. Very well done. Thank you to all of you who worked on it. So I would move to adopt a resolution amending the Town's Master Fee Schedule to update all fees and permits from 2009.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that measure passes. Thank you, everyone. So we have one more item. And this is, except for a few little things, this is Agenda Item 16. This is the Introduce and Read by Title Only in Ordnance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax Amending Chapter 8.68, 8.68 of the Town Municipal Code Regarding Smart Meters and Related Equipment to Extend the Prohibition on the Installation of Smart Meters. Until the Town Council determines that the privacy, safety, accuracy, and health effects of smart meters have been adequately addressed, seek exemption. Garrett, would you like to do a quick staff report?
Sure. Just as some background, back in August 2010, Town Council originally adopted an urgency ordinance basically prohibiting smart meters. In February 2014, the council extended that for another three years. And in February 2017, the council extended it for another three years. So where we're at is, the current ordinance, ordinance number is 806, is set to expire in February 2020. What staff is recommending is that we extend the ordinance. And actually, we're going to do something a little different. We're actually proposing the ordinance, extend the prohibition on installation of smart meters and related equipment to allow further legal and regulatory legislative activities to proceed until the town, sorry.
So no sunset date?
Yes. So no sunset date until the council decides that the legal, regulatory, and what was the other? Oh, and legislative activities have reached a level of which the council believes is addressing the concerns as stated in the ordinance. So what that means is it's just extended until the council decides otherwise.
Okay. Questions of staff? I want to point out one thing. I guess Vice Mayor Goddard and I sort of raised making sure that we continued this item as it was reaching its sunset. And I also want to say, one of the things I've asked is, when we created the new website, the smart meter page kind of disappeared. So I've asked that we bring it back with the information that was on it in the past. And that once this is adopted, we can include this as well. So questions for staff? Okay. I'd like to open this up to public comment. Did anyone, Frank, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Frank Iger, 13 minutes away. I'm just here to support the extension of the ordinance, which, you know, with PG&E and the smart meters, they know what time you go to bed at night, what time you get up in the morning, when you open a refrigerator door, when you turn your TV on. And they're gathering all that data and they're selling that data to somebody. So I appreciate you extending the ordinance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Frank. Richard, would you like to speak on this topic?
Yes, I appreciate this. Please do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back. Would somebody like to make a motion? Okay.
Yes. I would like to, yeah, I see. Got it. I would like to make a motion to introduce and waive the first reading and read by title only in ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending Chapter 8.68 of the Town Municipal Code Regarding Smart Meters and Related Equipment to Extend the Prohibition on the Installation of Smart Meters.
Okay. Who would like to second?
I'll second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that matter passes. So now we're moving on to council reports and comments. And if we really want to, we could each highlight one, but we don't have to do that in the interest of time. I would suggest that we do have written reports. So let's not do that. Town Manager's Report, maybe one of the things you could speak to is Renee has mentioned the Azalea project. Maybe you could just sort of flesh that out a little bit?
Sure.
And when that would occur?
So Azalea, what that is, is the installation of a rapid flashing beacon system on the crosswalk between Azalea on Sir Francis Drake ends Azalea. So you install the beacon system, high-visibility crosswalk. And then, as you know, if you cross that part, there is no sidewalk. So we would put in a new sidewalk. It goes down to Broadway. We install a new ADA compliant ramp. And then we install another high-visibility crosswalk to connect to the ramp across the street. And then we add charros going toward the library.
What are charros?
Oh, they're the symbols that you share the road, bikes share the road, cars. There's the green things on the ground.
Okay, thank you.
So.
They're going to be green? They're going to link up with the bikes, right?
Yes.
So they will be green?
Yeah, they'll be green. Yeah. Well, they're showing as green. I guess they don't have to be green. Anyway, the.
Make them green.
Okay, they'll be green. So the project, interestingly, costs a lot more than anyone really thought. Construction's estimated a little over $200,000. Design Construction Management's about $50,000. So we received a grant for about $253,000. It actually needs to be designed. Our game plan is probably spring, summer, we'd probably go ahead and install the improvements.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else you want to add to your Town Manager's Report?
No, other than, thank you. You said some very kind things. Appreciate that. I will say, my one comment is, interesting on this agenda, we put some things on just to let everybody know what was going on, but not take any action because we knew that people might not like it without getting a heads up. And so that's why we did that, although it did create a little angst. But I think it's a little ironic. We were trying to get the word out, but then almost in a sense penalized for doing that. But that's just my opinion.
I think to a certain extent, some of it worked. For example, the Marinada Heights EIR, just brief update. So I think it's a good approach, but it's not always going to work. And I just want to say, the kind words were well-deserved. So you're very humble and that's one of your most wonderful qualities. So we appreciate that. And so I want to adjourn in memory of several people. And I think Peter has one to add. First, the massacre in Mexico, the three mothers and six children. Oh, my God, I'm going to cry. That was just devastating. And that poor little boy who walked 14 miles and protected the rest of the children by hiding them. Just terrible. And Michael Scott Ferrero, Thomas McEntee, and now I'm going to cry. My very dear friend Lynn Knutson died a couple weeks ago. She and I had breast cancer together and she died of ovarian cancer. So she made it to her 60th birthday, but not much past that. Thank you. And Peter had a dear friend pass away.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to adjourn in honor of Sam Keston, the son of Stephen and Patricia Keston, all longtime residents of Fairfax. Sam died far too young. He was in his mid-30s. Avid professional mountain biker. He quit high school to go on the mountain biking tour. Graceed the cover of many mountain bike magazines. Blazed an amazing trail in that world and an avid sailor. And a great attorney, working for low-income workers. He received several pro bono awards for his work, even in law school. Just a great young man and just a real passion for justice. And a terrible loss for the community and for his family. So condolences to Sam's family and a really great, great man.
Thank you. So with that, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.